Yeah, do you think, because remember they Is that, is that okay? And I forgot of them, she wants to say. Go here, sorry. That's mine, but I need that.
Is that right if you left it up there?
Yeah. I'll go get it.
It's fine, not on your
I have one in the car, I can go grab, but not go
So it's a little weird. And then maybe after that
And no, that went into
This is the last one, they're like, maybe we'll just do this again right around the conversation for whatever was the first of the day. Walter had a good point. We want this presentation to happen. If we're public, we're supposed to be speaking because because almost they try to
This is
No, she's Think St. Martin is the first Turned over to my assistant. Oh, shoot. I don't know if I can do what she wants, but she works with the Hey, I was Periodic specialist, she does. She like training for Yeah, and she put him back as part of his Little bit, she did a couple of things, but she was at the period of the She has a nice book that she could have done. She knows all about It's good.
So your teacher
Oh, that's a thing though. Yeah, we all have our own way of finding ourselves here in Boston.
This is not getting past me, I just crossed your path.
Spiritually, how are you? I'm excellent. Yeah, um, I'm screen. Um, I will share the URL on the chat. It's, it's YouTube. Yes, I, I know
And then we turned it on right before And the red ring at the bottom turned on. I thought that was
Oh, no.
When I got, I went through the spring updates, I come back and I look at it, I'm like, okay, good, it's still red, it's recording. And then I got up there at the end and it stopped. Didn't go off. My heart was shooting. Like, it was muted.
I think this is the same thing, there's a, like, when you have mute, there's a red light.
Vowels was like too much. We're looking at this system, I was like, mics that drop If they wanted to
Well, this is the tribe and troop
Right, yeah, the normal way. So we just push record and it'll be a single A on In the podiums. We don't have the students back there working, we have the We try to get a more permanent embedded into this, though.
Wait, it's interesting, so
The right way to do it.
I'm assuming you're hoping not to get the same
Reader Bell, these people aren't here, but
Make them sit through it, so you can give
They will.
Um, I just sent her the link, let's get some report. That's not live, though, that's not
Alright, good evening, everyone, we're gonna go ahead and start on our workshop. So we are gonna do a bit of change to the agenda tonight. First of all, you do have a guest speaker that is going to be addressing us, well, introduced from our formal in the home. But one of the follow-up items from the last board workshop was to get information on the new legislation, PA 146, on reading, so that we understand where that is. So we're going to let our speaker educate us and then we'll have some discussion after that. We also have, this is a workshop, there is not going to be any decisions made here tonight. It's absolutely critical for the board to discuss the budget. That is something that legislatively, we have to get put into place, we've got a lot of issues with budget. So we're going to do our teaching and learning update, we're going to do our, our discussion of business services and budget, and then we will move into public communication. Some of the discussion that will happen may also inform some of the public communication that many of you are here tonight to share. So with that, Dr. Macheski, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Phil. Yes, we're very pleased to have Dr. St. Martin with us this evening, Director for Technical Assistance, for the Technical Assistance Center with MBE. So Dr. St. Martin, if you would, please.
Thank you, well, thank you so much for having me, it's a gift to be here. So, Adam Spector, which as Macheski mentioned, I'm Dr. St. Martin, and I am the Director for Michigan's TSS Technical Assistance Center. And I am here in part because I did to write what is now referred to as the Public Act 146. So I've spent approximately five to six years in hoping to be a part of the legislative process, if you will, back when it was Senate Bill 173, and more, it was Senate Bill 3, et cetera, et cetera. So my goal today is to provide an overview of Public Act 146 and certainly answer the questions that many of you do have. So, Public Act 146 is, is referred to as the K-12, so kindergarten through third grade literacy slash dyslexia law. And these are bipartisan laws, and it really encompasses Public Act 146 and Public Act 147. And the reason why I'm pointing here tonight on Public Act 146 is because Public Act 146 focuses on currently practicing teachers, so teachers who are in service. Public Act 147 focuses on pre-service teachers. Both of these laws are tied together, so they go hand in hand. So that's why, that's why you see K-12 literacy slash dyslexia laws, the bipartisan laws, because they both go in hand. And I think someone should, yes, is it okay to ask a question as to Absolutely, please. So what are pre-service teachers, can you help me explain? These are teachers in training, so they are students at universities like University of Michigan, Western Michigan University, so they are teachers, pre-service teachers that are students that are learning, teachers, yeah. And so I'm focusing on Public Act 146 because they are currently practicing teachers. But Public Acts 146 and 147, they are bipartisan laws, and they were signed by Governor Quinlan on October 10th, 2024. And the goal of the K-12 literacy dyslexia laws was to improve reading outcomes for K-12 learners. And the goal was also to impact pre-service education as well. So these are frequently referred to as a K-12 literacy dyslexia law. So some people do say dyslexia law, and I really do generally remind people that these are the K-12 literacy slash dyslexia law, because what you're gonna see in a moment is just referring to them as a dyslexia law is not really accurate. I wouldn't say that that is an accurate way to describe them. And some people forget that the grade level span, kindergarten through 12th grade. So I just wanted to denote immediately that. So let's talk about the components of Public Act 146. So Public Act 146 does encompass what was referred to as Read by Grade 3. So the formal statute that many of us in education know as Read by Grade 3 is 12A and F, that's what it referred to as a statute. So Read by Grade 3 is within Public Act 146. So some people ask, gosh, is there a separate Read by Grade 3 law? The answer is no, it is now within Public Act 146. So it includes Read by Grade 3, and elements of Read by Grade 3 were enhanced or revised. Many of you probably already know that Read by Grade 3, even before Public Act 146, was already revised, it, it no longer had included retention, that, that, all that happened even before Public Act 146 was signed into law by our, by our governor. But there were some changes to what we refer to as Read by Grade 3, once Read by Grade 3 was embedded within Public Act 146. And some of those changes are here on this slide, we have our copy in front of you. So the acronym IREPS, referred to as Individualized Reading Intervention Plan. So IREPS are still in Public Act 146, they were in Read by Grade 3, however, they span kindergarten through third grade. So that, so that is a change that is now in Public Act 146. They now span kindergarten through third grade. It is no longer required to develop IREPS for fourth graders. And Michigan Department of Education, my colleagues at Michigan Department of Education, we are working together to examine some of the language within Public Act 146, because there is a section of Public Act 146 that reintroduces the same acronym, the IREP acronym, I R I P, but it isn't, doesn't stand for Individualized or Individual Reading Movement Plan. It stands, it stands for Individual Reading Intervention Plan. So same acronym means something different, and it has raised a lot of question about, wait a minute, are IREPS for all students that go all the way up through 12th grade? And we're working on clarifying some of, some of that confusion. And so that is work that is happening right now within Michigan Department of Education, so two things. But I just want, I want you to know that, and any district to know, even the frequently asked questions that are already on the Michigan Department of Education website, everyone is aware that that point of confusion exists, and we're working at clarifying some of the terminology. So developing IREPS, though, in fourth grade, you know, it used to be in Read by Grade 3, and it's no longer required in Public Act 146. So that's an important note in that second sub-lit of this slide. Public Act 146 does require a level of IREP information to be reported to intermediate school districts. So the student level information is de-identified, so obviously preserving student information, so it's de-identified. It is to be provided to intermediate school districts, and then it is sent to Michigan Department of Education. And again, these are all things that Michigan Department of Education is aware of and are working to figure out the most efficient and effective way to, to address those things.
So the ISD is the one who removes identification, or is it the district that removes that?
I, well, because it, you, because the districts, because individual schools and districts collect that information, it, it would presumably be districts because you guys hold the information of individual students, and certainly having ISDs have access to that information without parental permission, certainly that's great. So it would be something that would be de-identified within the districts, the schools in the districts, and then we go to the ISDs.
Yep, very, very good question.
Another notable change is that the term diagnostic assessments, so diagnostic assessments was in the original version of Read by Grade 3, and that term is no longer referenced in Public Act 146. And that does not mean, though, that using data in a diagnostic way isn't a real good practice. I mean, I very much, when, when myself, when I work with teachers, I say, we want our educators to be diagnosticians, we want them to use data to be able to improve instruction. But diagnostic data is a type of assessment data, and that when Public Act 146 became law, that was no longer a required assessment. So that, that, that is not, it's not in here. And one of the reasons why is because Public Act 146, many people confuse this law with diagnosing dyslexia. So the term diagnostic assessment, many people provided feedback and said, well, this means you're diagnosing dyslexia. And that is something that requires very specific expertise, specific steps, not something that a diagnostic assessment, as it is defined, could, could, could do. And so in, in the Michigan MBE Dyslexia Handbook, we still talk about the importance of different, different types of assessments, and we still give a nod to the importance of diagnostic assessments, but having the need to have a list of approved diagnostic assessments, that is not in, is a requirement within Public Act 146. One final point to note of a change that was in Read by Grade 3 that's been changed in Public Act 146, is that there's a term referred to as District Identified Poaches, and that language has now been infused into Public Act 146. So those are the biggest changes that used to be things that were in Read by Grade 3, those are kind of enhancements and things that are now in Public Act 146, that many people may say, hmm, are they kind of similar to Read by Grade 3? Not the same thing? I wanted to point them out because they have been, they've been, we've been dealing a lot of questions about them.
I have it, so can we go back?
Yes, absolutely.
So I'd like to understand, Laura, can you give me some examples or give us some examples of what these diagnostic assessments were that were previously referenced and are no longer referenced? I guess my question is, you know, it would have been, we talked a lot about data, what kind of data will we be providing, and so it's interesting that, that this law might go in some instances towards less data. So, Juan, I'd like some examples of what those are, and referenced and required are two different things, so explain that.
Absolutely. So some, so currently, right now, you could actually go to Michigan Department of Education's website, and you could pull up a list of what's referred to as extensive assessments. That term, extensive assessments, was categorized, was a term that was used for diagnostic assessments, meaning they give you a more extensive information about students. So I'm gonna give you a name of one, okay? Dibbles Deep. It was, Dibbles was the name of the product, it was confirmed the understanding, reasons for why students may not be able to, are not be able to blend and segment the sounds of their hearing in words, for example. And so there's a series of, of assessments. Many diagnostic assessments can, can still be used, but what, what happens, though, is that they don't have a lot of reli, they're not necessarily reliable and valid measures. So I'm gonna get statistical for a moment, but some of the technical adequacy behind these measures are there, they've been studied enough to be able to say that if we were to administer them, they are reliable, they're valid, and frankly, you could use other sources of data to get some similar information. And so there are still teachers, regardless of whether it's on a group list or not, still will say, ah, we need more information about a student. You could still administer an assessment, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be an assessment that is administered for every student who is reading at a level below grade level expectations. Does that hope to answer your question? Thank you, thank you for your question. So, but keeping with the same topic of assessment, so there are some assessment requirements in Public Act 146. So they are broken up into kindergarten through third grade, and broken up then into fourth through 12th grade. So for K through three, Public Act 146, in, in the law, says that there needs to be reliable and valid screening and progress monitoring assessments. And it's, and the law specifically outlines the assessment measures that need to be used to assess for, the term I'm gonna define shortly is characteristics of dyslexia. So what you see on this slide are the types of things that the screening and progress monitoring assessments need to be equipped to assess for, meaning awareness, letter sound, correspondences, and all of these things that you see up here, all these things, the newest one is the one in bold. So the one in bold is pretty new, related to Public Act 146. It's referred to as rapid automated naming. And rapid automated naming is a very specific assessment that measures dyslexia characteristics, so it is looked at processing speed. So it measures individual students' cognitive processing speed, and it's done in a way by which students are naming non-colors, objects, letters, words, and the reason why it ranges from objects to colors, letters, or words, is if you've got a student dumb enough who doesn't get no letters, asking them to name letters isn't necessarily an indicator of their processing speed, it could be an indicator if they have no letters yet. But the assessment is timed, but it is, there is, we don't want teachers teaching kids rapid automated naming, it is just an indicator of their processing speed, which when I get to the definition of dyslexia in a moment, I'm gonna help, I'm gonna try to connect the dots and explain this better. In MBE's Dyslexia Handbook, we do talk about the utility of rapid automated naming, it is an indicator of processing speed, and that could give us more information about if you've got a learner whose rapid automated naming assessment data is indicating that they, there is, there could be, it could be at risk, it could be an indicator that there are dyslexia characteristics, and that it could help give more information and figure out what we may need to do to intensify instruction. But it doesn't have any instructional utility, meaning I had a teacher say, well, what should I do? Should I give flashcards and have kids just name objects? It's like, well, that, that's, there isn't instructional utility for that. I mean, your ability to process information, that is neurobiological, because that's, there's not necessarily anything that I can do, like show you pictures of things that is going to improve that. And so our, the Michigan Department of Education handbook does talk about that, and that is something that I just wanted, wanted to be transparent about.
I have a question with that.
Yeah.
Does that come for EALR students who may not be able to name the object in English in a rapid manner?
There actually is a whole other section in here specific to English learners. So there is a section in the Read by Grade 3 revisions, in this section, there was an enhancement done specifically for English learners. So the previous version of Read by Grade 3 did not take into account language proficiency. So the edits to Read by Grade 3 did include a language proficiency examination, like, like an assessment, like the THEWIDA is a very common language proficiency assessment. And so THEWIDA, if a student has a certain score on a language proficiency exam And so the WIDA, if a student has a certain score on a language proficiency exam, they would be exempt from any type of dyslexia characteristic screening because the function of their data is because of language proficiency. So we would have to take that into consideration. And so that was one of the enhancements when elements of Read by Grade 3 were revised and integrated into Public Act 146. That's a really good question. And Michigan Department of Education is in the process of creating the assessment review team, and perspectives on that team include English learner perspectives, so that we could ensure that we have the right voices and perspectives to attend to English learner needs. That's a great question.
I have a question.
Yes?
So I'm just wondering, who, you're talking about assessing these students. Is this on each teacher? Are there individual screeners? Are there specialized screeners? Like, how does this work?
Yes, so there is going to be, what you'll see towards the end, but I'll be big, big reveal. The big reveal is January 1st of 2026. Michigan Department of Education is required to release an approved list for screeners and progress monitoring assessments. Now, the, there is, there's flexibility across districts in how students are screened and how that works. So for example, in some of the districts that I have the gift of working with, some of them use an assessment team, like a sweep team, the Latin word term. Some do have teachers who even are a part of that assessment team. So assessment team comes in, teacher is a part of that assessment team, we divide up the kids, so it's done pretty quickly. So there are, it is a district decision on how to ensure that this assessment data can be collected. I am going to talk about what the coaches are also responsible for participating in because coaches being a part of that process, I also see very, very little.
So simplify this for me one more time. So is this law requiring each district to have a specific screener?
Yes.
You know, I hear you saying like there's flexibility of how districts are going to implement this, but is there, under this law, is there going to be a requirement for each district to have X amount of screeners or teachers being trained? Like, say, I don't even know how it would work in Troy. Hey, we're looking for screeners, who wants to volunteer? Or is there a criteria with teachers?
So there was already a requirement in Read by Grade 3 for a screener. For screener and for diagnostic assessment. So that was already happening for K-3. And so, yes, that was already a requirement, and Michigan Department of Education has, still has up the approved list. There will be a list for screening and approved screening and progress monitoring assessments that districts can choose from, and then it would be, it would be up to the district to go through the review and selection process to choose the assessment, their context, and ensure that individuals have the appropriate professional learning, and to ensure that they are not properly trained to administer this work. Fourth through 12th grade is a little bit of a different situation, though. So one of the biggest misunderstandings of fourth through 12th grade is that some people, one of the biggest misconceptions was that all students from kindergarten to 12th grade were going to be screened and have their progress monitored, and that is not true. So when students in grades fourth through, fourth through 12th grade, only adolescents who demonstrated any of the following characteristics that you see on this slide, only those students would you need to dig deeper. And so you may have students that already have our not doing well on district approved reading assessments, English Language Arts, for example. They may have a reading deficiency. There are a number of students, especially when you get into, there are hundreds of students in middle school and high school, and so you think about this as a cast in that, we do not want to assess kids that we do not need to assess. If you have existing data, we should not, we should move on. We should only focus on the kids in which we believe that there is something that we need, we need to see if there's intervention needed.
Kim, can I ask a question then about K through three? So every child gets assessed at kindergarten, but if they don't need to be assessed the next year, does everybody have to be assessed every year?
Three times a year.
Three times a year? Even if a child is demonstrating proficiency in reading?
Three times a year. And I know that within the Michigan Department of Education, we increasingly ask questions, we do address that. The threshold does increase, you know, as students, there are concrete examples where you may have a kindergartner who could look as though he or she is where they need to be in the middle of kindergarten, and then by the end of kindergarten, or certainly by the middle of first grade, without the ongoing screening, all of a sudden it's like, whoa, what has happened? Because the expectation does shift over time. And so, but the goal of this is to, screening should be quick, efficient. It should not be a laborious task that is, that, I mean, and this is where the list and doing a thoughtful review and selection process, and that is frankly why when you think about diagnostic assessment, diagnostic assessments take a long time. So to do a diagnostic assessment on every single learner, you don't need that type of information, is, in my opinion, not a good use of time. I'd rather spend time teaching. So, yeah, that's a really, really good question. How long does an hour of screening take? Depends on the grade level. And I could, I mean, I don't want to misspeak, it depends on the grade level of time of year. Because if I am a kindergartner at the beginning of the year, oh gosh, I'm going to be guessing. Yeah. Twenty minutes, two hours? No, no, it's definitely not two hours. I would say it could take, it could take fifteen minutes. No, I don't think it's too long. But, okay, Dr. Rocheski told me to, I will get the answer, so, because I really don't want to misspeak, but that comes up a lot, and I do want, it also varies based on the type of assessment, based on the publisher. And so different publishers have different assessments, and they have different administration recording protocols. And so, like, what I may say for one assessment may take more time or less time based on another assessment. But I promise, I'm going to get a couple of examples for you guys, if that's fair.
And I still have a couple more questions about the K through three. At slide number five, the assessment requirements, and I know you went a little bit more into detail about the rapid automated naming.
Yes.
But there's a list of others on there as well. And so, did those others previously exist in the current law? And is that why they're not highlighted or folded?
Yeah, so.
So, I think what I'm trying to get at, you know, and I'm not, I'm not a teacher, I'm not an educator, so teaching kids how to read at that level is out of, you know, my wheelhouse. But I do want to understand, because this is for us, I think this is also information that is for the community as well. And so I think sometimes there's this sense that everything we're doing now, or that we've been required to do now, is somehow, and this is not to say that there's not improvements that our district is always looking to make, but there's a sense of, there is what is now, that's all going to go away, it's all bad, and what's coming is all something completely completely new that we are not doing. And so I just, and I didn't, and I'm asking this because I do honestly know. So everything on that list is not something brand new that we're not already required to do.
I would say that. What was in Read by Grade 3 was the, so Read by Grade 3 did not include any definitions. It didn't. So like, if you were to open up the original, now I don't even think I have the original copy. If you were to, if I were to pull the original, I'll be up. You go to the back of the law, like, I could give you PA 146 right now. And if you go to the back of PA 146, you're going to see definitions. And if you go to screening, you're going to see what's on there. If you were to go to Read by Grade 3, you go to the, and what, go to the back, where you would expect definitions, you wouldn't, you would not have seen robust definitions. What you would have seen was what was commonly referred to as the five big ideas of reading, which included phon首先要ness, you could see the phon首先要ness up there. You would have seen alphabet, consonants, vowel phonics. You would have seen fluency, you see oral passage reading fluency. You would have seen all the words using fluency. You would have seen comprehension. You would have seen vocabulary, you don't see vocabulary up there. So this, Public Act 146, does spell out these, what is in the screening assessment, a lot differently. However, many people, if you look at the list of assessments that were on the approved list for Michigan Department of Education, many of those assessments on the list had all of these things, all the bullets here, except for, I mean, rapid automated naming was not properly named, but some of those publishers, the vendors of the assessments, added rapid automated naming to their assessment suite. And even some of the other assessments on that list would have done letter sound correspondences as well, or letter naming. They would have done nonsense word reading. So this is not, and I think what I'm trying to get is, is an understanding of, this is, it's, things may be more defined, a little narrower, but it's not necessarily changing everything that has been before, or that individual districts have necessarily already been following because of the prior law. For, I would say, now again, knowing, I've only had a few conversations with Dr. Rocheski, but for some districts, no, they're like, even, like, this is not very different from what we've been doing. For others, based on some of the other things you see, some may say, oh, this could be different. I mean, again, that's where I don't have the full context.
No, no, no.
But it's, it's not necessarily all new, something to mention to be defined a little bit better, but some of these requirements that exist in the prior law. Yeah. Really, really good question. Okay, so the assessment requirements for fourth through 12th grade, the whole purpose of why we would be wanting to assess fourth through 12th graders, the big idea is, even with Read by Grade 3, the truth is, and I'm going to be really candid and transparent with you guys, early intervention is probably one of the biggest bangers of the book. I mean, it is true. The truth is, though, we have, we have kids beyond, who are past third grades that are struggling to read. And a lot of the work that I do now is frankly with adolescents in middle school and high school. And so we, we do, we have to do something for our kids beyond third grade. So the fourth through 12th grade is really about getting those learners additional reading support. So the need to screen them only if they demonstrate any of those bullets, you know, like they have a reading deficiency, they have some type of data that indicates, like the ELA course performance data seems to be lacking, only if, then we have to collect additional data really for the purpose of getting them access to some intervention at a secondary level, okay? And then if you have learners at the secondary level who need access to intervention, at that point, we would want to, three times a year, say, okay, are we moving the deal? Are we, are we, are we working at accelerating their reading outcomes? So I do want to define what we mean by dyslexia. The reason why I'm defining it is because the, one of the biggest misconceptions of PA 146 is that this was about, this was about diagnosing dyslexia, and it is not. But I want to define it because the term that is pervasive within Public Act 146 is dyslexia characteristics. So I can't really talk about dyslexia characteristics if I don't define what dyslexia is. So I'm defining what dyslexia is. And dyslexia is, and this is taken right out of Public Act 146. So dyslexia means both of the following, so both of the following. So it's a specific learning disorder. So dyslexia is in the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual, fifth edition, DSM-5. It is a learning disorder. And I say that because depending upon the space and place in which you're situated, there are some people who say dyslexia does not exist. I would not feel comfortable saying that. It is in the DSM-5. It is in the DSM-5. It is, I have with me here, the Dear Colleague Letter from the U.S. Department of Education that acknowledges that dyslexia can be something that can be written into IEPs. Even the final section of the MBE Dyslexia Handbook, we do talk about how, how students, where dyslexia can be situated regarding special education referrals. In the book, Learning Disorders, it is, chapter six is called Word Level Reading Disability and Parenthesis is Dyslexia. So I want to be very candid, it is a specific learning disorder, and it's neurobiological. So, meaning it impacts, it impacts the brain, actually the left hemisphere of the brain. And it is characterized by difficulties with accurate or fluent word recognition and by poor spelling and decoding skills. And this typically results from a deficit in a term that you refer to as the phonological component of language. And I'm going to explain what that means in just a minute. And it's often unexpected, so we wouldn't expect there to be a difficulty in relationship to their other cognitive abilities because they, whoops, because they've been provided effective classroom instruction. So we wouldn't expect there to be difficulties with accurate and fluent word recognition. We wouldn't expect there to be difficulties decoding and spelling because they've been, they've been provided effective classroom instruction, they've been provided intervention to be able to address these issues. The second component of dyslexia is also true. This, it is a specific learning disorder, and it also includes secondary consequences. And those secondary consequences are things like problems with reading comprehension, reduced reading experiences. And those reduced reading experiences and difficulties in understanding what is read, that leads to impeding your growth in vocabulary, and it also can lead to social, emotional, behavioral difficulties. And so we do have some students, even as adults, if we don't feel comfortable, if we don't feel successful in doing something, we tend to escape or avoid what we do not feel comfortable doing. And so we, so it can lead to social, emotional, behavioral difficulties. So this is, the definition of dyslexia is in Public Act 146.
Kim, is it a spectrum disorder, or is it kind of an all or none? Either have it or you don't, or are there varying degrees?
So that's, yeah, so it, there's actual, it is a continuum that ranges from mild, mild to more profound and severe difficulty, so it is kind of along a continuum. And one of the resources that I've left you guys with in one of the last slides, next school year, I'm going to, the Michigan MTSS Technical Assistance Center is actually going to be is actually going to be hosting a K-12 literacy dyslexia research network where Dr. Sharon Vaughn and others are going to come. We're actually going to try to unpack this, this continuum that ranges from mild to more profound, significant, persistent difficulties. And so, yes, there is a, there is a range that we certainly need, need to unpack. And we need teachers and coaches and others to understand. It's a great, great question. But the characteristics of dyslexia, actually, I pulled a couple of examples, but in Michigan Department of Education's Dyslexia Handbook, page 15, which is Table 1, includes dyslexia characteristics that range from preschool all the way through 12th grade. So I've given you a sample of them for K-3 on Slide 11. And then I've also included a sample of them that would range from 4th through 12th grade. So it certainly is not the complete list. If you were to look at Table 1 on Page 15 of the MDE Dyslexia Handbook, you would see the full, full range of them. And these are dyslexia characteristics that may, and may as emphasize, may, may be indicators, characteristics of dyslexia. It's certainly just because, for example, stuttering is a preschool indicator, a characteristic of dyslexia. And I myself, my son Mason was a, he stuttered. And he, he certainly doesn't have any characteristics of dyslexia. He is a, he's a above-average reader. So may, is maybe characteristics of dyslexia. Multi-tiered system of support is also included in this, in the Public Act 146. And so it outlines what Tier 1, which is classroom instruction for, for all students. This includes students with disabilities, so all means all. And it outlines what, what Tier 1 curriculum resources should include. And this is where the K-3, you know, Individual Reading Improvement Plan shows up. And this is where the, the, the other acronym that we know is a point of confusion shows up, that last bullet. It's the term Individual Reading Intervention Plan. And again, we know that that's a point of confusion, and that's something that we, my colleagues at Michigan Department of Education are working on clarifying. The other point that is made here is that Tier, Tier 1 and intervention, we talk about a code emphasis instructional approach. And this, and, and this is a code emphasis instructional approach, means direct and explicit instruction on the code system of English. And it's at the sound, syllable, morpheme, and word level. A lot of people, I mean, including myself, I just never learned this when I was in college. But, you know, the fact that we have 44 sounds in the English language, we have 26 letters in the alphabet. But in, in actuality, the, there are about, I've seen a study of about over 1,000 different ways in which you can combine the 26 letters of the alphabet that could actually represent 44 sounds in the English language. And even something like morphemes, morphemes are, are, are units of meaning. So even when I say cats, these, at the end of cats, that S, that means something. That means plural, means more than one. And so, so our language is fascinating. And a lot of people assume that the English language is really complex, it's hard to understand. And the reality is, is that we can teach kids that there is a logic behind the English language. And so, the code system, understanding the code is something that is going to help prevent and intervene to be able to help address some of the learners that are on that continuum of mild to more complex, severe consequences of, of characteristics of dyslexia. So code emphasis instructional approach is something that we, that we have, that is in Public Act 146. So is the term the science of reading. And that appears. And I want to just be really, really honest about what it is and what it's not. The next slide is going to talk about what it's not. I want to talk about what it, what it is. So the science of reading is a large body of scientifically-based research. And so, these are studies that are studies that have a high likelihood, now I'm going to get real technical, these are things that are like randomized control trial, quasi-experimental studies. These are things that have demonstrated outcomes that are going to improve reading and writing outcomes. They don't happen by chance. But the science of reading, these are things that have researched, it's been conducted over 50 years. It includes studies that have occurred in multiple languages, not just English. And it really means that there's a substantial body of evidence to inform how proficient reading develops, how writing develops, and why some, some individuals have difficulty learning how to read, learning how to write, and how we can most effectively assess and be able to teach to improve reading and writing. But here's what it's not. It is not just a philosophy. It's not a fad, a trend, a new idea. For, I'm going to age myself, I mean, I, I'm 48, I've got readers now, because I, it's hard for me to see. But it used to be called scientifically-based reading research. SBRR used to be the term back in like the early 2000s. This is not something that is like brand-new. Even, so this is not a new idea. This is, this is something, this is also not a political agenda. I've heard people talk about it as a political agenda. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach. I've read articles where people think this is just about phonics. This is not just about phonics. The science of reading, there are studies, scientifically-based studies that have, that have been conducted that talk about how kids can most effectively comprehend what they read, and how writing and reading are reciprocal, and how writing improves comprehension. So there are a lot of studies that don't just talk about phonics. And so I want to be very, very transparent about that, what it is and what it's not. This is the piece that I, that I also want to point out. Section 23C, subsection 3, A through E, is, shows up in Tier 1, which is Classroom Instruction and Intervention. And it says, "The instructional methods and curriculum resources described in the sub-paragraph must not include instructional methods or curriculum resources that minimize the importance of primarily using letter-sound information to decode or recognize unknown words." And so, including but not limited to any of the following. So the following are A through E. Prompting our students to guess unknown words using pictures and illustrations, skipping over unknown words, identifying the first sound and guessing, memorizing a word in its written form, using predictable text. Now I will say, using context clues, so if I am looking at, at one of those, if I'm using context clues, for example, I would use context clues to be able to understand, define words, and make meaning of what I'm reading. That is a strategy that I actually use with adolescents when they are in discipline-specific tasks and the teacher's not there, and we're not providing teacher-directed instruction on vocabulary. That is appropriate. But when we are, when we, when we have the regions of the left hemisphere of our brain that are responsible for reading, all three regions have to work together. So we, we, we can't have kids guessing words in lieu of teaching them the code. They have to understand the sounds of our language and how those sounds come together with the letters and letter combinations. And we've got to, to give them the practice in being able to read words that include those letter-sound combinations. So this is, this is very, very important. And it's going to prevent, it's going to prevent reading difficulties, and it's going to help be able to intervene and ensure that our student can accelerate the reading outcomes.
Can we go back to that for a second?
Yes.
Should it be, the figure that I am, so there's that entire vast part. So just understand, the promotion is that, or the goal is that A through E are not the primary mode of identifying or reading a word. But those A through E are not prohibited, correct, right? Because it says, unless such instructional methods and curriculum resources are being used to confirm the meaning of unknown words after decoding has been attempted. So that's just to confirm the meaning of the words.
Right, so, so wouldn't, so these four things would not be used in lieu of teaching kids some, like actually using a code emphasis approach? So this would go into hand with the code emphasis instructional approach. It would be right here. So, yep, that is, so this is something that is, that, when, when you asked me, I forgot who asked. Someone asked the question, well, is this anything of a future? Is this something that we're already doing? And I said, well, it, it depends. Some districts would say, yeah, like, this is right in line for what we've already been doing. This could be the section where some say, eh, this may be something that we have to do some digging. And we may have to.
Yeah, and the reason that I.
The reason that I, that I asked, right? Because when it says that these are things that must not, must not be included, people see them not included and just see A through E. And so, you know, it's, you know, clearly, our district, as other districts, will be reviewing our reading curriculum and, you know, seeing what changes need to be made. But I bring that up because if people see the must-not include and see A through E, and then their child comes home and is using these other things to make meaning of a word, then, you know, people need to understand that some of these things are not, it's not must-not be included at all, right? There's a, it's a, it's a, it's a finer, does that make sense? Because people can see must-not include, and then they just see that A through E is not a part of reading at all. Whereas in fact, it might not be part of learning how to read a particular word, but it can be part of reading in the context of understanding and making meaning. So I, I, you know.
That, that was a little bit of the concern that I had. Because without your explanation, I looked at B, and I thought, that's a valid strategy. I mean, I still think that way.
It is, yeah.
And so, it, there's some, and, and I didn't get that from reading that paragraph. So it's, yeah, I'm a little concerned in that, you know, to Lina's point. We don't want people confused that what are really valid strategies for content understanding for comprehension are being precluded. I mean, what would be a real bad consequence of this legislation is that we can sound out words, but we're clueless as to what our kids are reading.
And one of the things that I give you guys so much credit for and is to even have this type of, of, what you call it, a work session or workshop. Workshop, yes. Because these are the types of conversations that need to be had. So I could, I could show you an Institute for Education Science Practice Guide. It's a research-supported document that talks about how to help, how 4th through, 4th through 9th graders read. Recommendation 3 is about comprehension. One of the strategies does talk about vocabulary and talks about comprehension. And it does talk about kids using surrounding context to be able to define unknown words. So in the context of defining an unknown word for vocabulary, that is appropriate. And one of the, Dr. Sharon Vaughn, who's going to be doing the, helping to lead the K-12 Literacy Research Network next year, one of the topics is going to be misuses of the science of reading. And there are some folks that don't have that last part. If you're looking versus but not limited, limited to any of the following, unless such instructional methods and curriculum resources are being used to confirm the meaning of unknown words after decoding has been attempted. There are several states that don't include that caveat. And there are people who are misunderstanding and saying, well, but, but if, but if I really am reading something and I don't know if I've read, if I decoded the word correctly, I do need to use surrounding context to really be able to say, is this making sense? Am I actually defining the word? Now I will say, as a former teacher myself, I am going to totally date myself. But I used to, I used to use something, I used to use the four blocks method. And I used to use something called Guess the Covered Word. And this is back in the transparency days, where they had colored transparencies. And they just had invented the little post-it notes. But I, I mean, I used to have to put, I did a picture plot, and I, I taught first through 3rd grades. And I had to cover the bold word. And we used to correlate the passage and, and over, and we used to take blank over the covered word. And so I took a VCD pen, marker, and put the, the words, the guess. And I would expose the first letter, and I would cross off the guesses that were not right. We would expose the second letter, cross off the guesses that were not right, until we finally got to the correct word. And that was being done instead of teaching them the code. And that was not, like, that's not skipping over an unknown word to use the meaning of the passage. Like, that, like, I shouldn't have been doing that, honestly. Like, I should have taught them code. I should have taught them, I, I was using Guess the Covered Word because I really wasn't teaching them the sounds and connecting the phonemes, the sounds of our language to the, the graphemes, the letter, letter-sound combinations. And I, my mantra is, no better do better. And there are things that I wish I had do over, that's one of them. And, and there's certainly others. But you're right, there, that V, there is a time and a place where that has to be done to understand what you're, what you're reading.
So I would just update, this, again, I go back to, sorry, that's okay. The vast majority, or a lot of people, why do we say vast majority? Not everybody will sit and read the headline, the headline, right? The, the, I, I, the, the, the first sentence, and then read all of it very carefully. They will see must-not include A through E. And they are going to think that A through E is never appropriate when we're teaching kids to read. So I think it is very important for people to understand, even after we as a district update and make whatever changes we need to to comply with the new law, A through E will still exist. Because if people get the sense of that A through E cannot exist at all because this is must-not included, we need big letters, they're going to get the sense of, it can't be there at all. So I think, I think that's very important to figure out how to, you know, especially with being presented. We're being teamed today, so this is going to be, you know, people are going to be watching this at home. It's very important for people to understand that must-not include has a caveat in there. So A through E is not, you know, prohibited as a part of any reading curriculum.
And it's after decoding has been attempted.
Attempted, yeah.
So we have to decode.
Yep.
Forget to attempt.
Give a question for you. So you are going to be to Emma Summing, and you've taught that method, and.
Well, no better do better.
I get that. But all the students that you have taught are going to wait, and so right now?
Well, I, I mean, I wish I could go back and keep track of every two graders.
So there are, there are many ways to peel, or to teach, I'm assuming. Sometimes I feel like these type of prescriptive laws can make it difficult.
So, there are, the final few slides, so there are things that Michigan Department of Education is responsible for, for doing. So MDE is responsible for defining, providing a coaching model. And that includes expanding the coaching model to include grades 4 through 12. Because currently, the coaching model in, was required for Read by Grade 3. So Read by Grade 3 includes the coaching model for, for, sorry, for actually, pre-K through third, third grade. And we are also updating the assessment list. Again, January 1st, 2026 is the, is the date, circle on the calendar. And January 1st of 2026 is the date, again, that's when the, the list of evidence-based Tier 1 reading curriculum and materials will be published as well. And Michigan Department of Education is also responsible for developing. technical assistance. And the technical assistance, and again, there's a lot more, you know, words than what I have here on this slide. The gist is how to select and use the assessments. So how, so how to carefully select screening assessments, progress monitoring assessments. It's technical assistance in structured literacy, that's another term that is defined within Public Act 146. Technical assistance in evidence-based instructional methods and curriculum materials and understanding dyslexia. So I said earlier that we would be, you know, to Dr. Philip Hart, that everyone we shared that lesson, correct? We would be providing, next year, some professional learning in understanding that, that continuum of mild to severe profound difficulties in dyslexia. That's an example of further understanding dyslexia. So those are some of the Michigan Department of Education responsibilities. So questions, what, I mean, we've been doing questions all throughout, but what additional questions do you guys have for me?
So I, so we've, I would say even over the last six months, we've got questions and some feedback from the community of the new law's been passed, why haven't we been implementing the changes? And so I just want to make it then clear, right? So an official list of approved assessments has not been proposed yet.
No, it has not.
Okay.
And there's not been a published list of, of, of curriculum that, that is recommended? So the, not for Public Act 146. So yesterday, the Section 35M, as in Matthew, that, there were three lists that were, three rankings lists that were released. Now, 35M is out of state aid. And that is $87 million. It's a, it's a competitive grant competition. And the rankings lists were for Tier One Early Elementary Curriculum Materials Intervention and Professional Development. I can actually have those printed here for you. Now, just note, state aid, our, our state budget went into effect officially October 1st. And the very, the second slide that I went over, Public Act 146 was signed into law by Governor Whitmer October 10th of 2024. So state aid was already in effect. Section 35M was already written. Many people are getting the list, the rankings lists that were just released yesterday. They're thinking that yesterday's lists are one the same as Public Act 146. And that's not, that's really not, not the case. And so I want, I want to be clear about that. January 1st of 2026 is when the Tier One Classified Elementary Reading Curriculum List needs to be released for Public Act 146. And that's the same date when the assessment list for screening and progress monitoring assessments needs to be released. For districts who want to apply for the, some of the $87 million that are a part of Section 35M funds, the application for those funds that's open now is, is available via NEXIS and you can go online to be able to access it. We've got a nice YouTube tutorial on how to, how to navigate the lists and how to apply for, for funding.
So.
I have a question about that. So is it like, does it make sense for a district to apply, like, for this 35M money if the things on that list might not be the same things on the PA 146 list? Or is there some sort of assumption that, oh, maybe it will be here? No?
Yeah. So I certainly want to speak for my colleagues at Michigan Department of Education because Dr. Jennifer Saylor and the National Assembly are not here. But, so I would encourage people to speak, to directly communicate with them. But it has been communicated that the things that are on the Tier One list and those things that are currently on the Section 35M list will also appear on the Act 146. However, there needs to be another process by which additional vendors can submit to have things. Because, I mean, let's be honest, not every vendor perhaps submitted or, or desired to, to submit. And so, but I, but I do not want to misrepresent my colleagues at Michigan Department of Education.
So it is possible that vendors and approved assessments and curriculum may appear in 2026 that are not a part of the approved training under 35M?
There are no assessments on 35M. So like, so the assessment list that I'm referring to, January 1st, 2026, per PA 146, that is not a part of 35M. So there is no training available under 35M for assessments that may appear on the list in January 2026. No, there's not. Now, I, I say that, now what really can confuse people is that when I look at the professional development list, one of the, one of the, one of the, you know, I, we call them partners, you know, some people may call them vendors, we call them partners. But NWP A has a Science of Reading Literacy Suite. So it's a professional learning series that's on the science of reading. Even though they, you know, one of the things that they do publish is part of assessments, but this is, this is like, they're on this professional development list, but not for assessments. This is for professional learning.
And the reason I ask this question is because we've, we've been asked in recent comments, and it appears more as of, you know, as of October 1, 2024, it's all been decided and we as a district are not making use of things that are already clearly spelled out. And so the information we're providing is that there are certain things that are a part of this law that have not been clearly spelled out and will not be spelled out until January of 2026. And so it's very hard for us to implement changes when we don't know, right, what those changes, we know what the law is, but some of the very specifics of the law have not been published yet. And so it's very hard to implement things that have not been defined.
And if I could just add one thing, so I, I, I would be very, I would, this is Kim St. Martin's opinion. So I want to say, you know, I'm not speaking for the State Department, I'm not speaking for the district, because that's not supposed to be sort of Kim's department, my own opinion. You know, entering into a decision on a curriculum resource review does take time. And, and it, it really requires due diligence to ensure that you, the people who are going to be leading up the review work have built their background knowledge. And frankly, what is in, in Public Act 146, even just unpacking that Section 23C of Section 3, right? Even just unpacking that is really important. But it's also important for your teachers as well. The list that I'm talking about right, right now, these things and perhaps more are going to be on the list. What, what these lists have done, like for Tier One, we stay with Tier One, we've helped to unpack evidence, which is only one thing that is important for a district to attend to. But you guys also have to attend to things like usable. How usable is it for your teachers to be able to implement in their classrooms? You also have to attend to supports, what, what is going to be needed for your teachers and staff to be able to successfully use those things? And you also have to think about what are your needs as a district? How can you build upon what you already have in place? How can you build upon it? How does it meet the needs of your students? Again, I don't have any, any context of that. And I would, I would argue that a generic list would never be able to adequately address the, be able to read between the lines and say, this is good for blank eight hundred plus needs of districts and thousands of schools across the state. But you also have to say, how does it fit? How does it fit with your current priorities and what you are, what you're focusing on? So I, I, I just want to, my opinion is you have to have a review team. That team has to be led by individuals that not only are listening in tandem with central office, but it has to have, you have to have a way to engage your grade level teachers in that process as well. And people do have to have access to professional learning. And so, and I certainly, I don't want to assume what's already been done, but I just want to be very mindful that I, I, I do know that Dr. Rice, our, our state superintendent, even today, we were at the legislature and he was, he was presenting at the House Oversight Committee and was advocating for more Section 35M funds. Because I do think that we really should, as a state, need more funds for districts to be able to implement aspects of Public Act 146. I hope it's fair, it's okay for me to say that. And I apologize, it took, it took too long.
I actually have three questions. First one is about the timeline of this law. So you talked about Tier One reading curriculum material to be published January 1st. Is there a timeline by which, or deadline by which the schools have to adhere to the law?
Yeah, so 20, 2027, 2028 is the implementation window for, for Public Act 146. And that, that was intentional. I mean, I, like, and what I'm saying is, is a matter of public record. If you were to go back into the archives, when the Senate was going through, the Senate Education Committee was listening to Senate Bill 567, Senator Paul Hanke had said that they wanted to extend the timeline to 2027, 2028, specifically to allow assessment vendors, but also districts and schools to have a longer on-ramp to be able to think about attending to curriculum and assessment decisions. So 2027, 2028 is, is the timeframe by which implementation would happen. And I, and I've had a couple of questions, like people have said, what about, is there something in Public Act 146 about waivers? There is nothing in the law that says there's a waiver. So I mean, I have not seen that in the law. I would encourage people to reach out to my colleagues at Michigan Department of Education just to get an official answer, but it's, I, I, it's not in PA 146.
So like second, okay, it's the, is it by the 27, 28 school year or is it by September 28 or?
So there is, so a decision needs to be made August of 20, August 1st of 2027 would be when the decision for the universal screening assessment, screening and progress monitoring assessments, it needs to be made. Because then, schools and districts would have to be, you have to have people trained to be able to administer the fall assessment, like to be ready by the beginning of the school year to do your fall screening assessment or kindergarten grade, or kindergarten to the grade.
Needs to be approved or needs to be implemented?
So August needs to be selected. And so you would have to be approved, probably prior to that. It would have to be approved by August 1st. You would, you would be, I mean, again, I don't know how long your.
We would be looking for, we would be bringing a recommendation to the board, May of 27, for implementation, fall of 26, for the fall of 27.
But where to start our reading curriculum process? That's just a common goal.
The ideal would be that we would, to, to Dr. St. Martin's point, when the comprehensive list comes out January 26, we will have a, our, there's a leadership team will be ready to look at that list, begin putting a comprehensive process together. Our goal would be to bring that process, the intent of that process, the structure behind that process, to the board in May of 26 for.
26 or 27?
For May, that we would bring a process.
Okay.
That we would lay out for the board, May of 26. So it's clear going to the board and the community what our process will be going into the 26, 27 school year. So the 26, 27 school year would be pilot, feedback.
So it would be about a year and a half process.
But it'll be about a year and a half of process. And to Dr. St. Martin's point as well, this implementation will also take some time. I mean, whenever you implement a curriculum, in particular a curriculum that is as inclusive and as extensive as a reading curriculum, K-5, will mean additional professional learning for staff. It will mean time necessary to fully unpack and understand the work. So I'm, I'm looking at two solid years of very intensive implementation and support for staff during that implementation period.
And that includes the four through 12 assessments as well, the same.
So the, the assessment list is going to span all, all the grade levels. And again, that is something that's going to be driven by the research. And so the assessment team, I mean, more information's going to be coming on that, that the research, that the review process is going to drive what gets on the list, what, what assessments, what measures, for what grade level, what's reliable, what's, what's valid. So more information to come.
Yeah, I understand the point I'm making. We have a plan, K-5, but it will need to comprehend.
What that implication is right beyond that.
And if, and if, and if you're a secondary student and you have dyslexia characteristics, the primary consequences, you're likely struggled with some multi-selective decoding issues. In your secondary consequences, because of the multi-selective decoding issues, it's impeding ability to comprehend, reduce reading experiences, reduce topic and background knowledge and vocabulary.
Still have two more questions.
Yes, yes.
Being patient. So this is the area of the question. You're going to publish a list in January, but the law does not require you to follow anything in the list. The law has a set of requirements that you need to adhere to for this. I'm asking you the question so that you can clarify. So if us as a school district find a curriculum that's not a legal, theoretical question, but still would adhere to everything in the law that is required, that is specified, is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to, so you, you are right. I mean, so that the law does not require that you have to choose a Tier One reading curriculum from the list. Just like you don't have to choose from the Section 35M list right now. That, that's just a competitive grant. So you are right. It does not, it does not require that you have to do that. With that said, though, I did, I did include in one of the resources, I included a link to the K-12 Literacy Dyslexia Page from Michigan Department of Education. The frequently asked questions document does, does reiterate what I said, not require to choose from that Tier One reading curriculum list. It does talk about within Section 2, there are, districts do have to have assurances that what they are using is aligned with the science of reading. And it outlines the types of skills, but you're not required to choose from the Tier One reading curriculum list. Assessments is a different story.
Right.
That is a different story. That is a requirement and the frequently asked question does outline that as well.
So as a follow-up question, what is the body or organization that's going to approve what we have chosen and say, yes, this was one, this means the law? What body size? Is that a need?
Yeah. So that is information, I, I don't want to steal their, their thunder. That is communication that's going to be coming out from my colleagues at Michigan Department of Education. So you can release them. Yeah, I, I, I know that the, what I can say for the Section 35M list, that was the Committee for Literacy Achievement, but I, I'd like to wait until my colleagues at Michigan Department of Education can. of Education can communicate because there would be communication regarding the assessment as well and communication regarding what's happening with Public Act 146. I hope it's okay that I'm, I just.
No, it's totally okay. I'm also trying to.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. And the last question is, all of this is mostly reading curriculum or is writing part of it or separate? Can you help me understand that?
Yeah, that is, that is a really good, good question. So, um, so reading and writing are reciprocal skills. And so I do want, I do want to, want to talk about that a little bit. So this, these are called the K 12 literacy. The fact that we're saying literacy, we do start to work a bit from reading into writing because literacy in and of itself, it means reading and writing. With that said though, when, like if you were to open up the Michigan Dyslexia Handbook, we talk about like the heuristic or the framework that we use to try to define how reading develops. We introduce people to something called the simple view of reading and then we talk about it pre-K through 12th grade learning progression that's developing skilled readers. But there's also a simple view of writing and there's also a pre-K through 12th grade learning progression that develops writing. And I just want to be very honest about the fact that the simple view of writing talks about transcription skills. So there are things that like the mechanics of writing, kids making sure they have the posture, how they're positioning their paper, um, like using the right writing, pencil, pencil grip, um, you know, even, even like motor facial, like those are all transcription skills, really important. And we say that these things get increasingly automatic. And there's, so that's like one, one body of, of things within the simple view of writing. And, and it's, don't let the name fool you, it's not, it's, it's, it's not simple. It's just, it's, it's easier for people to understand. It's transcription skills multiplied by, um, translation skills. And these are things that help kids write, um, they generate ideas to write. And these things need to be increasingly strategic. And these are things like, I mean, these are kids are generating text that they're writing. These are things like planning, they're drafting, they're editing, uh, they're using word choice, they're thinking about writing different text structures, they're writing different genres. And writing is mediated by attention, it's mediated by working memory. And we can, so reading and writing do go hand in hand. They are reciprocal processes. However, many people think they are two sides of the same coin and that's inaccurate. Because I could put, I could put four words up here and we could probably all read them. And then I could just randomly say four words and say spell them. And for some of us, many of us, we may not be able to spell them, like I'm on a piano. We could, we could read it, but our ability to accurately spell it would be a challenge. And what that means is that, I mean, if, if you can spell a word, um, you know, it's, if you can spell a word, you can read a word. But if you can read a word, it does not mean that you can spell a word. And so these two skills are very much connected. And it is important, and I say that because if we think about the primary consequences of dyslexia, spelling is something that was a, was something that was a primary consequence. It's difficult to call these decoding, accurately decoding text, spelling, even when it comes to screening, we reference a spelling, uh, screening assessment, it's not required in P A 146, but we say assessing kids spelling. And I'm not talking about the good old fashioned spelling tests where you just are given a test that you memorize. I remember I had spelling books when I was a kid in elementary school. Those people, so it's not what we're talking about, it's not what we're talking about. But the point is that reading and writing do have a very reciprocal relationship. And I say that because, um, you know, you are benefiting reading when you are teaching spelling. And that's why a really good phonics and decoding lesson plan should incorporate spelling and dictation at the word level and sentence level. So you are starting to get at those reciprocal skills. Now, what you're also talking about is, and I know, like thinking about perhaps thinking of reviewing a spelling curriculum and I, I mean, I don't know what your review process is, I just encourage people to think about making sure whatever you're reviewing has those transcription skills and those translation skills. And a lot of the tier one reading curriculum resources do integrate writing into reading because they want kids to write about what they read. Because writing about what you've read increases comprehension and it also builds cognitive background knowledge. And even the National Council for Teachers in Mathematics, it encourages kids to write about mathematics, to, to write and explain how they come up with responses. So even at the secondary level, we have kids writing more about, across core subjects. And again, a lot of my work right now is in core subjects, it's in, it's in secondary schools. So, um, they, they do, they do benefit each other. Um, and a lot of the things that you will see on the tier one rankings list for 35M, they do, you'll see on the documents that have reviewed these, you'll see connections to writing. But I, I still think you need to be very mindful, there is a simple view of writing and you've got to attend to transcription skills like handwriting, pencil grip, uh, you know, those early skills and making sure that kids are writing across genres and that they are drafting, editing, planning, text structure. And I certainly have, I'm not an expert in a lot of what, what was reviewed and I certainly don't know what you guys have been reviewing, so I don't want to speak to that. Does that help answer your question? Thank you.
So the content of writing and the creativity of writing is not a component?
It is. It absolutely is. I mean, it absolutely has a, has a, has a component. So genre, texture. So if I am a teacher and I am, if, like think of if I'm doing folktales, biographies, um, absolutely, there is, there's 100% a creative element to it. And there's also an element about kids writing about what they're reading. So I'm saying it's a both hand. I'm not saying that it's one or the other, I'm saying it's both.
I, I guess the real issue on the table kind of being, and part of the reason that we asked you to come was there was some sentiment that we should not continue to enhance our writing curriculum, that we should keep things as they are, even though we know there are some weaknesses in the writing curriculum about constructs, so, and some of those things. But that we should just wait until the reading curriculum comes in 2027. That to me seems very short sighted when we know that there are issues that will help us to enhance and align our curriculum more with kind of what the future intent is. And so, but there seems to be some notion amongst members of our community that by enhancing our writing curriculum today, we're going in the opposite direction of what the reading curriculum is telling us to do and therefore going to be wasting training, time, resources and so on. And so I'm just like, is there going to be a writing curriculum that's going to come out or if we have a general idea where we need to potentially put more emphasis on our writing curriculum to make it align with, you know, some of the tenets of this law? That would be the wise thing to do.
Yeah, I mean, there's what, what you're, and I'm, and I'm more than happy to have more conversations with you guys. I mean, you, I mean, I can actually go through what the various review rubrics looked at about how reading, how writing was integrated into reading. It was mostly, there, there were some that looked at handwriting, um, I mean, there, some do it well, some curriculum resources, not so much. Now again, I did not personally review these, so I'm not, like, there was a committee for literacy achievement who did. And so I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on, on all of these things. But I, I also don't want to, to say that I know what you guys have reviewed. What I do know is that, um, you know, that there is, that, I mean, I can't imagine that teachers don't want kids writing about what they read, just like writing creatively. I write, I mean, so, I mean, even kids writing summaries about what they've read, I mean, that's a really good thing. And so, um, I, I mean, I, I know you guys have to do what works given the context of your district and I, neither myself or, or anyone, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable coming in and, and weighing in on that.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not asking you to do that. I guess I'm asking is, um, you know, is the reading and writing curriculum moving in a way that is, you know, that kind of to a newness question, kind of a totally new direction so that the kind of writing work that we've done, particularly when we identify that one of the areas in our writing curriculum that we really want to focus on is problems which seems like it's consistent with the work on decoding. I'm just asking, you know, like that to me makes perfect sense for us to do. And if, when we're going through a reading curriculum in 2027, there's something that is rated for writing, then we can evaluate that at that time. Just part of the big issue is, you know, do we just let two years of students just keep doing what they're doing when we know that we could do some things to improve?
I guess we're seeing sort of the.
No, I understand, but I, what I'm looking for is, is, you know, are we, by us doing that, are we going in a contrary direction from? I think that was the question on our, on the workshop too. I know that you were traveling. You know, if we adopt this writing curriculum and then this reading curriculum comes up, is what we are going to do with writing going to drastically change?
Right.
Right? That was basically what we asked of our teachers. And not only is it, are we working counter. Right. To where that is. And I guess I'm not hearing anything that you said that would suggest that would be the case.
And I also don't know enough about what you guys have been working at to even weigh in. But I did say to Dr. Majeski that I'm more than happy to continue to have conversations to, to see, I mean, you know, teaching is important, right? And, uh, and it is important for kids to, to understand how the mechanics of writing and to write, uh, to build topic and background knowledge and to write across multiple genres. And it's important to be explicitly taught how to do that. And so I certainly, but I am more than happy to learn more and to be able to support you in any way that I, that I can. My mantra's always been as a teacher, know better, do better. And.
Let me ask a question this way.
Yeah.
P A 146 has been a specific example in how reading is to be both assessed, right, and taught. Is there any component in P A 146 that is specifically going to say what the writing curriculum needs to be? Because there are, this is like ours where we actually have two separates. So we have a reading curriculum that is, that is separate from our reading curriculum. So for example, in sixth grader, students take both a reading class and a writing class. It is most often with the same teacher. When it is not with the same teacher, those teachers collaborate together. And so our writing, it's together, but it's also separate. So we have a very robust writing curriculum that is in addition to and separate from our reading curriculum. So this law will not prescribe or address requirements for writing curriculum, right?
I took that away, I was.
So that's, so that, that is, I think that's the, the main thing. And so this law in particular does not inform, right, in how we move on that question. And I, I also don't think it's fair to ask somebody who's not here to consult us on that or, you know.
Yeah, I was, yeah, fine. Yeah. And you stated the question better. I wanted to make sure because we had discussion, we don't want to be doing something that is contrary to the law. But it sounds like the law is silent on this. And so, you know, we have the ability to look at what, you know, our professionals are recommending, knowing what the intent of the reading law is and understanding where we have some divisions.
And I think when you speak about writing, you speak it very differently from what our writing curriculum is, which is a thing of its own. And so when you speak about writing, you speak more about transcribing, the physical writing skills, whereas our writing curriculum is, is, is covering all of the genres of writing, drafting, generating ideas, all of those things. And so, um.
I, I would hope though that any writing curriculum includes the transcription skills because it does need, because that is important when kids are actually sending their letters themselves as well.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? What do we want to? Thank you so much.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Thanks. So with that in mind, for the purpose, Dan, before you get going, for the purpose of continuation of the discussion that we had in the May workshop, the board had an opportunity to ask a number of questions and just provide a follow-up to us. We want to share that with the board so that they have the.
My time.
All right, then let Dan come on and then we'll circle back to that. Okay. Go ahead. Come on, Dan. Sorry. But we do want, there was information that was shared with the board that answered a lot of the questions that we had as a board. I want to share that with the public and I really want to ask the board, what else do we need, is that comprehensive or additional information that's required because of the resolution on writing curriculum, which is set to four. Okay, while you're doing that.
Yes.
Dan.
I brought it up here today, it wasn't my idea as well. So first, before we get into budget though, we do have a few relatively simple business services items on our agenda for tonight and for your consideration at the next meeting. So first one, food service extension. So this kind of law, we have to go on an annual basis for food service company if you contract it out. So in this case, Tarte Hall's last year was the first year of their contract and then this is the first renewal of five annual period that we've been. So, it's a five-year contract, four-year renewals. So this is the first renewal year or year two. So this process goes through the state of Michigan. So you have to kind of send your budget to the state, they have to approve the budget if you do a Tarte Hall to make sure it looks good. They kind of break down here, all the different sales projected, the expenses, the state signs off on it, and then they give you what they call free approval. So basically their, their lesson about contracts, for us, which is done to you tonight, not for your approval at the next quarterly. So. So all of this is approved, approved by the state. It's essentially dictated by the state as well, they put caps on the re-ring. So not really a lot of woodroom, so to speak, with, um, the actual, the huge old set that's associated with this. So, you know, there, there's really not a whole lot to discuss. I know this was included in your board packet, you guys could see the administrative fees, the management fees. Um, tho- those components aren't negotiated between us and a food service company such as Charlows. So everything else, though, is really just projections based on the cost of food later and everything, so. And then this break here is the letter, um, that, and we did approve our request. So now we can bring it forth to you for approval, and as soon as you approve it, um, you can then start to like, uh, with another year with Charlows. And then obviously, you know, we are in continuing conversations, our plan with Charlows. Going into next year is to hopefully do something similar that we did at Baker, where we kind of brought you guys to that building for a workshop, have to experience the food. Our goal is, once the Troy High Kitchen survey is done, we'd like to do something similar in the fall. Uh, we'll give us an opportunity to go there. And then really have a conversation of where do we, as a district, want to take this food service program? So we're going to kind, we're going to get together a committee that would involve some Charlows staff, some administration, um, from across the district. And, and, you know, as far as you want to take it, whether that's community surveys, just to kind of get a general sense of where do we want to go? In terms of investing in equipment at the building models, serving different kinds of food, obviously there are other, the review of USDA, they have restrictions they have to follow. So, um, we're going to do our best to try to just take a holistic view of that program across the district at every level, and then start going together, kind of a strategic plan of where do we want to take it. So, um, that'll be forthcoming, uh, this year.
So again, I do have a question, and this is beyond the money and beyond the contract. But, um, and I brought this up at Charlows when we had that, um, Baker, you know, is, I still am concerned that even though the food is all free, only sixty-five percent of our students take advantage of that. So I don't know what Charlows can do to improve that. I mean, if thirty-five percent of our students don't want a free food, we got to do something about it, so.
Yeah, and that's all related to menu options, and that's where I think we can get to do that from parents. I don't know that we go to survey families, you know, on food offerings in the district. Um, I know that the schools do have some say in what menu items are put on, um, the, the monthly calendar. So, but if, if there's a way to improve the offerings, a lot of it's predicated on the equipment you have to serve, to protect the food. You know, they're putting, in, in middle school, they're putting two to three hundred students in a half hour to a deadline. So, you know, they're at the mercy of whatever equipment they have to offer that food. So that's where our goal continues to be, to set, and kind of put together a list that we can bring back to this board and say, here's what we really believe we need to invest, whether that's food service dollars or bond funds, uh, helping we implement more of those dollars into the food service program, um, just to examine those offerings.
Thinking to that, it would be, what I was thinking about, it would be useful to have, it was sixty-five percent of the eating here, at least, so that isn't still sixty-five percent. Yeah, but I would say it would be good to, to see, you know, some year-over-year period staying the same. And it might be like the back months, where students are outside of the food quality. But, um, so I think that, I don't need that information now, or for, you know, for the board meeting. But, um, next year, it would be good to get some, or start generating some year-to-date of how many students are accessing it, especially if it remains free. And then, um, and then maybe some, you know, a student survey once a year, so we have to be around your data to see if students are satisfied with the suggestions.
Some kind of improvement plans to try and increase that number, I guess.
I know we just, we had our first wellness committee meeting, which will tie into the food service program. Um, that might be a venue where we can ask some of these questions as well. But our goal ultimately is to have some tor- some type of strategic plan available that can say, this is exactly where we want to take this program. This is the small dollar round that we need to invest in these equipments. But there's other things perhaps that we can change beyond just spending dollars on it as well, so. But for now, this is just a one-year contract for the whole.
Dan, can you just clarify what that one line, student à la carte and adult sales, what does that mean?
So, so the, the big dollar round here, the five-point million, that's your free meals. So that's your breakfast, your lunch, uh, your snacks. The à la carte is essentially anything that has to be smart snack approved, but it doesn't follow the same guidelines as a traditional meal does. So a student that would want to buy something, it could be a cookie, it could be a bag of chips, something that is still within the criteria allowable to sell within the program without losing federal funding. So, um, some students do opt-in and purchase those things.
But we don't get reimbursement for that stuff?
Correct, that's just local revenue, yeah. Same thing with catering and Head Start, Great Start. Um, those are just various different caterings across the district for different events, for teacher initiation, whatever. But that money, the general fund, you typically have a total account or a student activity account that pays for those caterings. That money then does go into the food service fund, fund balances.
Anything else on this?
And the next one, so at our board retreat back in March, uh, I had talked about First Student coming up for a contract renewal. So First Student has been negotiating with the Teamsters Union, that is the union that supports care drivers, you know, the workers, um, outside of just driving. And so they have been in long negotiations, I would say, um, our district has been in a fortunate position with the rates that we've picked up with student, in that we were kind of ahead of the game before all the rate increases and markets were coming into play. Uh, so they more or less ate the cost of it this year, um, since we were already in their contract with, with the route for these, um, which are way ahead of that. So, in looking at this, we have a great relationship with First Student, you know, they provide a great service. They're not in the two struggles that are there across the industry with respect to driver shortages and such, but they're doing better. Um, we've seen a significant improvement this year because their new rates aren't actually that already. Uh, so they gave their drivers a well-deserved, um, their pay. Uh, they, they were battling outside of schools, truck driving jobs, things like that. So, um, that adds UPS, there's a myriad of different jobs that they can take. So we've had to compete with those markets essentially to ensure that we have an adequate level of drivers to provide this service, um, to our community. So, in going through the negotiations with First Student, kind of went back and forth, meaning what the rates should be. I called up units from districts in the surrounding area that do contract their transportation. The rates are all in line, we were, you know, twenty percent lower than a lot of districts in the area, which is good for us for this year. Um, but we do know that, that inevitably it's going to come back to us, uh, next year. So we also worked with Clark Hill on this contract, they're the ones that put this together for us. They have a lot of data too, because they do these same contracts for a dozen other districts. So they've got a lot of pricing data too that they can compare against, which is good. All of which is in line with what you're going to see here in their rate. So traditionally, you do like a one-year renewal at a time. In order to try to spread this cost impact out over a two-year period, we suggested perhaps we look at a two-year renewal, um, in order to help alleviate some of the cost increases that are coming our way with respect to this contract. So just as a quick breakdown here, this is the sheet that I use to go through this. So this column here is our current rates. So you pay a daily rate decision for a regular route, special route. Um, especially the Indian District routes, other district routes, depending if they're going to a school district for a special ed service or a center-based program. Uh, we have extracurricular field trip routes, midday show routes. We have eight monitors across the district that go on, they'll plus up to service to students and to assist those drivers. And then our summer routes for regular specialized. So you can see here, uh, just over four million dollars in our contract this year. Going into next year, we're looking at a total increase of about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. What I want to point out is, we went back and forth and really focused on what this special aid is. Because there is an inherent increased cost into transporting a special needs student. There's additional supports that are needed on those buses, additional harnesses and different things that you have to ensure that that bus has in order to be compliant with the IEP, but also to make sure that that child is safe. We wanted to look at that rate specifically and say, okay, is that, is that rate of three thirty-eight from the prior year a good rate? Is that covering your cost, is it not covering your cost? And we felt like it, it needed to go up to more than the general rate does. That also helps cover some of the costs to these monitors. You know, there's only so much that you want to push the, the hourly wage up, uh, you know, on our end here. But inherently, there's other aids that might help out on those buses via those A monitors. The other important part to note is, while this is an eighteen percent increase in next year's rate, and then nine percent in the second year, when you report, in our district, all of our special ed buses are a hundred percent used for special education. When a bus is used for a hundred percent special education, you can report that cost to the state of Michigan. Uh, the special ed report's forty ninety-four of them. Those costs then we have reported to the state, and then the following year you get seventy percent of that increased cost back to your state agency. So from our lens, if that's the case, this is our net increase then, because we're going to get three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars next year from this year's cost numbers. And then likewise in, in subsequent years. So really the, the true net effect is not a three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar increase. So when you're looking at that, then it's, you know, it's a little bit more probable, it's less than ten percent. So that, that's the, the balance that we're trying to draw, and making sure that we're reporting accurate costs to the state of Michigan, ensuring that First Student is able to cover their costs on that too, so. So in total, over two years, it's about just under six hundred thousand dollars.
Two questions. The first one was the, the special ed cost, so were we underpaying those drivers until now?
It's really on their end. So they're, they're looking at the total amount of money and then how do they break that out, and then bill us. So we just said, you know, is there a need to shift more of those dollars on their tracking, on their end, to ensure they're allocating more to specialized?
Now, we're getting more turnover in, in those drivers?
Um, I wouldn't say it's significant, but typically there is a little bit more turnover. I think it's a comfort level of that driver as to whether or not they allocate their weight to service, a special needs student, depending on what the IEP calls for, which is that.
The second question was with the, the three, uh, three buses that we got. You needed special drivers and special, or a little bit technologically savvy drivers, I remember. Um, is that cost additional to this, or no?
It would, they had to just essentially work with our whole, um, whole group of drivers and, and found a few that were willing and actually eager to drive a bus. Um, so those two actually are set to come hopefully by October.
So there's no additional cost?
No additional cost for the driver. Um, it, it really boils down to the state grant, covers the actual physical bus. And then we have another grant that is going to cover what we applied for, and we're hoping it'll cover the cost of the installation of the chargers as well, so.
Might not be supposed to, right?
Um, they, they just wanted the production, so we're hoping the actual running of the body will be done sometime midsummer. But then they got to go on the inside and do everything else. So we're told September, October, they don't like to give us a specific date in case it doesn't look at that, but, yeah.
So I remember we did the bus study, and I think if you scroll down a little bit, this is for, I estimated how many buses on regular? Oh, is it thirty-two routes? And I do remember one of our studies had up to thirty-nine buses, I think.
It's a big influence, it changes.
Right, right, right. Right, so this is just an estimate of like if we stayed at thirty-two, correct?
Not an estimate, this is if we keep our-
No, no, not an estimate, yeah, that's my mind, like, we keep that current.
Yeah, this is-
Right.
So we, we are not, we have not evaluated, we're not, we haven't, we have not made a decision about what we will do in future years about start times. This is just for next school year, renewing the contract for them to keep running as usual, current running.
Okay.
That's about our, our final work, we're going, maybe in August, we'll be ready for that. Um, that did have a minimum, where we can, right, current rounds. So it'll be about seven, eight additional rounds, depending on the exact rounds and all that.
So like obviously, if we've decided to go with the results and still you've somehow changed start times, then we're supposed to adjust our contract?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're literally just paying for the round per day, that's all I think.
The rates are being, I mean, insane when they're at thirty-eight, right? Fairly just getting more rounds or the same rate.
Yeah. And then, I'm just, I'm going to do the other two real quick, because they're very quick. Um, so we had an asphalt and crack sealing bid that was put out. It was a single bidder, we reached out to multiple bidders and trying to generate more cost competition there unfortunately. With their schedules and everything else, there just wasn't enough bidders. But the cost, I believe, is, is their cost relative to what we paid in the past. So this is based off of a plan. So there's, we did a study as a district, our operations team, where it was a three-year plan. So you can see twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-two, we're just following this plan. So they went around the district, they've identified specific areas of parking lots in every building. So this work would essentially cover the whole district in a phase of growth over the next three years. So the total was eighty-three thousand dollars for this bid. Or eighty-nine thousand dollars, sorry. So we don't foresee that we're actually going to utilize all that, that's kind of the max. If you did every little piece, they're just going to go through the contract and then identify specifics or goals to come in after that conference. Because we also have some identified areas at Athens. Um, this study was performed months ago, and now that we're kind of nearing that finalization of the Athens design, there's some work that likely won't happen there, just doesn't make sense to fix it when the potential never gets up here, so.
So Dan, in situations where you have, just for the sake of audience, in situations where you have one single bidder, how do you make sure that that's appropriate with, um?
They look at this normal payments, once they pay other contractors, you know, and then from there, you can look at whether it's the rate of inflation or something like that. Just to make sure it's a reasonable cost. If it's not, then they would rebid something, um, if they felt that it was just way too high. So they're working with dozens of vendors every day, so they know that eighty-nine thousand, that's a reasonable cost. Uh, but if it's not, then they would rebid it or hold off a little bit if needed.
Why is this coming from the general fund instead of the C D fund or something like that?
Then they, it's almost like painting, so like they need to drop the, the work, they don't consider it permanent. If I was to replace the asphalt, yes, it would be allowable, but in this case, we could have just painted the cracks, so to speak. So unfortunately, it's just part of our maintenance budget, so. So that'll be part of our budget preparation as to what we're going to do with our stuff.
Or just under the line of funding, is this really appropriate?
Yeah, I think maintenance is general fund, and then repair, replace is sinking fund. And then the last one, uh, relates to, um, the Troy preschool. So they are looking for this pavilion, so this was consortium-based pricing. So this pavilion would go on the north end of the building, um, it would kind of give a, a nice front look to the building, but it'll give them an opportunity to have a covered space for kids to go outside if it's rainy or if it's too sunny. Uh, but also they have outdoor class time if they wanted to, um, outdoor events with parents and families in the covered area. So this is something that they've been asking for for a couple of years, um, we've just had to wait for the appropriate time, um, to, in order to charge them into the sinking fund. So, um, but they came in for the consortium pricing, I should say, it was a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, so that'll be paid for by the sinking fund, and then the bill is to order and get it installed as soon as that comes in.
This is towards the square leg side?
Yes, the north side. Yep, kind of open, um, patch of grass on the far right side, I don't think they had it.
And what's the capacity to come to people and put under that?
A little question, please. It's about a thousand square feet, it's the same size as the classroom, we probably could fit thirty to thirty-five people.
Are we getting tables or something?
I think that's very planned, once they did it in, and then, um, we started something, some of those, um, uh, twelve miles, yeah, that was something that we launched. But they would like to install some sort of, I think they would.
Um, I got a request here to take the, uh, shoot by the bridge, or is that? All right, let's take a five.
When I sat with them two weeks ago at a community organization, and I started radically advocating for achieving.
How's it going, how are you?
Good to you. Get some from Michigan. We have a twenty-one year, ELA from that. Sutton was around, they're, there's, immediately we're, there's nothing. Given a community, like, we're, we're, that there's data to, they're writing to us that, because the M set data, the M S R data for ELA is green, it's not red. There is a red, but the kids actually, and there's data, they didn't even put that as part of the, there's no, there's no data that they're looking at to make this decision, it wasn't even, it wasn't part of the decision. Because how can we type in any ratio to a person, look at this, and say, yep, that's accepted, yep. They're like, it's never been known, in this school, we have enough costs below sixty-five percent, which is efficient. And everything, so how do we have to go through to register, get their attention for a need to change? And yet we're going to contain it, it sounds right. We're looking at other districts, we're looking at districts that are, using good things that are, that are, that's, that's, that's. Any district that's looking at, you know, special education, so you talk to the class, and they're like, they're like, they're like, they're like. Relative to the political, is that politically, there is a subset of individuals outside of political parties that are going to back during the election, so as I said, be prepared to warn the rest of the world, I can't say three hundred percent. Oh, outside the system, you take the time to educate. They don't want any questions, that's very clear. They absolutely want to be heard, which is fine, if they have different points that shows that they're.
So I'm going to ask everybody if they would please take their seats.
I promise I'm like this as seamless as possible, and I know footnotes are always a fun tool for everybody, but. I think it was important, I don't know, but this presentation, I did put, at the next meeting, it was traditional, very detailed, types, and all of that. But this presentation, I wanted to kind of leave it for an air place, talking about the methods and assumptions and all of that, knowing where these numbers came from, and then obviously if we go through, we have a bunch of, you know, hopefully more interactive than the traditional words that I've put in there. So as we go through, there's kind of four parts to this presentation. So the final amendments from this year, and then the proposed budgets for next year are all embedded. I wanted to break it up by the fund, but then include the amendment, which then generally ties within the projection amount for the following year. So first, we'll just touch base a little bit on the truth to taxation process and establishing the road race. That's the public hearing that happened on June seventeen, right here. That's required by law for us to go through that process and lay out what our general fund, we'll do budget adjustments and then budget assumptions for next year, and then we'll jump into our ancillary funds, we can see a list there, and then the special ed fund as well. So a little bit of each of that. So quickly, just taxable values, I thought this was a good reminder, I didn't have this in my initial presentation, I hope they did real quick. I finished it that way on Friday night, so I didn't quite put it in there, so. I wanted to throw it in there, just as a reminder for both of our community, looking at all the different tax rates that you might see on your tax bill, or you see in, you know, community newsletters, whatever it may be. So homestead, that just means your primary residence, so generally speaking, that's a home, that's your primary home. In certain rare cases, it's kind of commercial agricultural property. Non-homestead, those are your business or rental property, secondary homes, your own vacation home. And then typically, commercial related property or commercial agricultural property. And then the total taxable value, we talked about that, that is the combined homestead and non-homestead rates. Those values, the total value is always capped each year at the lesser of the rate that we're placing at five percent. Going into some rough numbers, over here, the county sends us the double D four to twenty-eight, that is above taxable value. We took, we get that in April, we take those numbers, we plug them into our calculators, we calculate up those rates every year. So you can see last year's summer twenty twenty-four, those were the rates published for homestead, non-homestead, and the number in my year in orange. And then again, looking at twenty twenty-five, so the upcoming summer's taxable values that we use as part of our calculations. So the ratings this year, just under five percent, so again, higher than we've seen pre-pandemic, but it's kind of been the transition to the onset of pandemic, because these taxable values have been increasing much higher than typical, but the heavy amendment, we'll touch on that in a minute, that does restrict it to that cap of five percent. So the different taxes that you'll see, kind of travels for the nation and the community. State education tax, that is the six mills that everybody pays, that is homestead and non-homestead properties. That is an amount that goes right through the city to the state of Michigan, and then that's where the foundational allowance, the bulk of that comes from. The operating village, that's the one that our voters approved back in November, so that one is the eighteen mills on non-homestead properties, so primarily businesses with vacation or rental homes. So that eighteen mills, the state does assume that the district levies that amount and collects that amount when they calculate our foundational allowance. So when we say we're giving ten thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars a student, about two thousand of that has to come from this eighteen mills. So they're only giving us ten thousand three ninety-four minus the two thousand. So if the district didn't have that, that's where, during the COVID, we got twenty million dollar loss for revenue, probably got a lot. Whole harmless, that was also tied in with the operating village, so this only applies to homestead properties, so this did not get levied on the business. This is the one, every year we calculate based on enrollment, taxable values that we just looked at, and the foundational allowance. Those factors get plugged into a calculator that the state of Michigan gives us, and then from there, we calculate out, as you can see there on this current era, the rate is two point seven to ninety-four mills. So each year, we have to look at our enrollment projections, that's why that information is so critical. We have to take those numbers and we have to plug that estimate into that calculator, because if we estimate too high or too low, we have to do a true-up calculation at the end of the year, and then we have to look and see if they help our authority based on the actual call count that happened during that school year. So then you have to take that difference that you calculated and apply it to the upcoming school years, whole harmless rate. So again, something that, we don't want any volatility in that rate on the tax rate, it's on the third year, I don't want to be doing ten more next year and love this year, and it just creates a mess. So that's something that we take very seriously, it's something that we looked at and have approved as well this past Monday. So we want to make sure that that rate is as accurate as possible. So the rates that went over here, they are ninety-nine percent final, there's a live taxable value site that the state has that we will update it one more time prior to the June seventeen meeting, at some point you got to cut it off and calculate it. But we just want to make sure that we're using the state information prior to the approval. And then the intent of this one is to essentially recognize that the state changed the funding model in nineteen ninety-four with the rules laid. And so we were at that time receiving eight thousand dollars a student, let's say, and the state says, no, we're shifting the funding over to the state of Michigan, and now you're only going to get six thousand dollars a student. They wanted to hold us harmless by saying, you can collect that extra two thousand dollars that you should have been getting, but you have to get it from your local, your local community. So that's that voter-approved whole harmless village that the voters also approved last November. And then lastly, sinking debt fund, those two are levying on homestead and non-homestead properties, and that's based on the total taxable value across the city, and that is the fiscal twenty-five rate plus point nine six, low six. And then that funds is the six point one those there. So the heavy amendment, I mentioned that, so that was voter-approved, that from the late seventies, and that was amendment to the Michigan constitution. And what that does is it essentially says that every year you've got to automatically roll back your mileage rates to ensure that you're not exceeding that five percent or greater increase in tax rate from year to year. So we run those, the sinking fund and the operating villages through a calculator, those are the two that the heavy amendment applies to. We run that through a calculator, then the calculator will tell us, okay, you were point nine six last year for sinking fund, this year you're point nine four. Whatever it may be, the county tells us what that reduction fraction should be. So every year, that's what we're doing with those two. So looking at what is taxed, or levied, I should say, on homestead properties within the city. So you can see in the blue is the state education tax of six mills, whole harmless, we're projecting about two point five three. Again, we'll take that a little bit here over the next week, and then your debt fund and sinking fund at six point one, point nine five, four, respectively. And then this is on the non-homestead side of things, so these are your businesses, these are your secondary loans. The primary difference between this and your homestead is that green bar. The green bar for a homestead property is your whole harmless, and then the green bar for a business is the operating village. So businesses basically move to a higher amount with respect to that green column there. The other three are the same, that homeless, so there's no one difference between the two. And then looking at the combination of all of those categories combined, you can see here the blue thing, homestead, and then the green thing, non-homestead. So we're at just over fifteen mills total from the school district, or homestead, and then just over thirty-one, they're on homestead. So jumping into the general fund side of things, so first we'll look at the adjustments made. So not much has changed from our board retreat when we presented the third amendment. So really, again, we're going through, we're looking at our categorical funding, we essentially look at the May state aid report and say, okay, where are the exact numbers at right now? From May to August, when the last one comes out, there's typically a lot of changes, so. We, we, this is what our funding, that my numbers should be. We also go through federal funding, on the grant side, the state grants, and then we say, okay, this is where our anticipated expenditures are going to be. Let's take those and adjust the revenue and expenditures accordingly, and then if we have to defer any of that grant dollars to next year, then we put that in such it. We'll get ISD-related funding sources, so we have GSRP, IDEA, very smaller grants that come through the county or through open schools. So we go up that gap through those and we just update it. And then likewise, we go through all of our purchase services, supply purchases, salaries, kind of gets everything. We go through it one more time just to make sure that we haven't missed anything. So in total, there's about nine thousand accounts that you have to go through, so it takes time, and our finance director is, he's off today, because he's been working one for seven, it feels like the last couple weeks, to make sure that we have everything as good and tidy as we can. Going into next year, budget assumptions, so as we go through, we look at the House, the Senate, and the Governor proposal for funding. They provide a foundational allowance recognition in their budget proposals, and then all of the summer categoricals. So what we did this year is we took all of those categoricals, we listed them all out, and matched it up to what we had to need this year. And then we said, okay, what's the Governor, what's the House, what's the Senate? And then looking at that, we took the lowest of the three proposals, just to ensure that we have a conservative estimate on our way. So we went through line by line, except the lowest proposed option between the three proposals right now. We also looked at what is our blended FTE counts, so for those that may not know, our FTE count that we get funded on is a combination of ninety percent of that current fall and ten percent of the prior string. So we have to look at both of those, and that's what ultimately it comes on for that school year. So we do have that decrease, which is anticipated, that's part of our enrollment projection. We're seeing about a hundred and fifty to two hundred FTE reduction year over year. So we're going to go from, in our projection, and that's what this budget is based on, from twelve two seventy-four to twelve one twenty-three. And then the lowest foundation in the three budget proposals was three hundred and ninety-two dollars per student, so that was again factored into this. The larger piece that we've been working through as a district is the expenditure reduction across the board. This is not unique to Troy, every school is going through the rate now. Every director or CFO that I have talked to from surrounding districts, they're all battling the same problem. Some of it hits the news unfortunately, but it's not a problem that we weren't aware of. Districts lost, in this case, twenty billion dollars of funding to investor funds over a four-year period. A typical increase annually, pre-COVID, for a district of the size of that, five million, twenty-two million dollars if you were lucky annually. So just to put that in perspective, twenty-eight million dollars of investor funds is gone. Where Troy is in a good position relative to other districts is our fund balance was, at one point, a little bit over twenty percent. Our goal is fifteen percent, that's our board policy statement. When you exceed that twenty percent mark, we're governmental, we're not here to make a profit. We're here to serve students, to train, attract, and team staff, and then, you know, provide results from that. So our goal is not to make sure we have twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent fund downs. Our goal is to ensure that we're using those dollars as a really, what we can afford to build from twenty-one percent down to fifteen percent. That's where you're going to see terminologies of, there's a deficit in all these districts. It's not a deficit, it's a use of your fund balance, you have a large savings account of money sitting there that you can now start to spend out. We've been fortunate where we can essentially transition all of those positions that we have with twenty-eight million dollars investor funds over a four-year period, we can transition over a three-year period and say, okay, how can we continue to provide the support to our students and give our staff the supports they need outside of the classroom, to continue to service the students that still have those needs? The money may not be there, but the need is still there. So that's the challenge that every district is having the same conversation right now. So that's the challenge that every district is having the same conversation right now. So as we went through, through a process of attrition, we have targeted five million dollars in total reductions. About two million of that relates to salaries, another million of that relates to the retirement and the associated benefits. And then two million of that also comes from, an additional two million, comes from purchase services, things like conferences, different software, or consulting fees that we may pay, those are all being removed. And then a substantial amount of that, about five hundred thousand, I have here from repairs or replacements that were coming out of our general fund that we can now shift into our sinking fund because we have a bond to bolster the sinking fund cost out of as well. So it's a very holistic view. I know our cabinet team and administrator group have had extensive conversations pretty much since the fall, and then more recently over the last couple of months, trying to figure out how can we make this work and be responsible with the dollars. But also recognize that we do have some fund balance that we can spend out. So looking at this, so you'll see our original budget there on the left panel. We have projected just over fifteen percent fund balance remaining after this year. After everything shook out, we're projecting just under seventeen percent. My understanding is our cabinet team last year had extensive conversations, and we reduced about ten to twelve FTEs of going into this year. So again, based approach where we wanted to reduce it a little bit. This year, we're going to show a loss of just under that three point four eight nine million right there. So again, we kind of pull it back up a little bit, but again, end of year at sixteen to seventeen percent fund balance after this year. After the five million dollars of reductions that we have been talking about over the last couple of months, we're not going to show a little bit higher next year, but again, that's based off of a very conservative revenue budget. But we want to ensure, even with a conservative revenue budget, we're still at just over fifteen percent. And then in the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, our projection is that we would, based on a very, very conservative revenue budget, we would be at maybe three to five hundred thousand dollar loss this year. So we're closing that gap over a two-year period. So again, I just want to reiterate that you're going to see things in the news, you're going to read about it. I think a lot of it is misguided, they're not looking at it in the right sense. You know, for years, districts were less than fifteen percent fund balance. You know, credit to the federal government, they put a lot of money into districts and had a lot of our fund balance to skyrocket. Average statewide pre-pandemic was thirteen to fourteen percent, and then now it's around twenty percent. So at the beginning of the pandemic, that was actually one of the quoted ideas that the state legislature looked at. So look, districts are sitting at five billion dollars of savings, it's time to shrink them down a little bit. So, you know, for us, we're trying to leverage that to our benefit.
Dan, I think it's really important for semantics, because legally, we have to develop a balanced budget. We have a balanced budget here. We're choosing to, you know, actually not ramp down our spending as consistent with our revenues so that we can use that fund balance that we, that are responsible in, you know, saving for a time just like this. But I think, you know, again, we have a balanced budget here, it just happens to use some of our fund balance. And I think that's really important to how we manage it, because legally, we have the responsibility to pass a balanced budget. This would be a balanced budget.
And it's that-
Our revenues are less than expenses at this point.
And the twenty-nine million dollars pending fund balance right here, that is the number that can't go bigger. So when districts get to a five percent fund balance, our debt is where the states are currently at. You've got to make a plan to raise that beyond five percent. So we're not close to that. CPA firms, legal firms, they're all recommending fifteen percent. So I'm gonna say twenty percent, but I think there has to be a give and take. You know, you obviously want to be able to pay your staff and continue to invest in the program and all of that. So our goal as our cabinet team, and I know the board's goal is that fifteen percent mark, so.
And I will just respond for the new board members, and certainly for the time I've been in this district. You know, we've been very judicious in terms of using that fund balance so that we never have to interrupt programming so we never have to lay off staff. At least in the sixteen-plus years I have worked with the county, I had to do that to pass the current number of layoffs.
Can you go through that, general fund, what you're going to run?
Is there a way for us to be able to look at, like, five, see in, like, a detailed format, the five million dollars of what that was? I heard we set up salary retirement and all that, would that be somewhere else?
Yeah, we do have that information.
We were working on it as well as yesterday, we were updating it.
Oh, we do have that information.
I'll share that. And that's primarily why you don't see, like, a super broken down detail just yet, because I don't want to pull it out of one function code. It might not be one function code. So we just wanted to make sure we have an accurate list, essentially, that we can provide and examine what the actual budget was. So quick to moving on over to the twenty-nineteen capital projects sponsor. This was a bond from twenty-nineteen issuance, there's about a million dollars left. So we've kind of been looking at the current bond and evaluating the projects associated with the current bond dollars, and how can we then just take some of that and basically apply it to the millions that remain from this bond? So now that we're kind of through the design phase on all of these projects, our goal is to essentially zero out that fund balance, that million dollars of that bond this year, and then that bond will be closed out. So again, that's really just, it's renovation projects throughout the district. It's all within the balance language of the bond at that time. So our goal is this fiscal year coming up, we would be able to spend that down.
And it has to be spent down by the, in the twenty-sixth year?
And then the more recent bond, the twenty-twenty-three capital projects sponsor, this is the bond that the voters approved in November of twenty-twenty-two. So again, this schedule, on its end, for board presentation purposes, is based on the factual expenditures. We're being fine with doing part and all on this budget. So it's a very fluid budget in terms of planning the projects and then seeing the timelines of when those dollars would be spent. But we have a very detailed cash flow that our NAL generates for us, so we know exactly how much we're going to spend every month on various projects. And that's something they update every couple of months for us. So based on the current expenditures in the middle column there, that's what we drafted the end figure. So we have just under eighty million dollars spent of that hundred and ninety million dollar issuance for that first series. So that'll leave us just about a hundred million dollars remaining, which will, again, go towards discussing the new split of the school, and in part towards Athens account, and then furniture play down all the time. And then next year, based on the cash flows that our NAL will provide, we're looking at about sixty-three million dollars of expenditures, which we're currently leaving about forty-seven million dollars. With the goal that hopefully in spring twenty-twenty-six, we would be looking at issuing that second series of around a hundred and eighty million dollars of the bond.
Then what's the such a difference between the original budget and this amendment for this fund, like, almost double the fund balance? Is it some construction projects that delayed, and that was the reason?
It probably was, still had that design phase when that original budget passed last year. So now that they've fine tuned the construction schedules, that ultimately dictates the amount of expenditures in this school year. Well, that's why I say it's tricky to bring a budget like this, like, the original budget, it's based on cash flow at that point in time. But as projects change and evolve, timelines like these tweak, that's ultimately going to drive what you have.
It's all constructions.
Yep. But as part of our annual audit, this specifically is always tested. So that's something that they're going back in and looking at, okay, seventy million dollars spent, but it just doesn't align with the balance language. So that's something, there's a lot of oversight with the bond fund. And then on the other end of the bond fund is the debt fund. So the debt fund is the six point one mills that we levy on all properties across the district. Those dollars generate enough revenue to pay the principal and interest payments on the debt that we owe for the dollars that we generated for construction. So again, this is all just based on essentially an amortization schedule. It lists out all the principal payments, all the interest payments, and then from there, we can project out what our total expenditures within that fund for the year.
Is this the one that gets impacted by the interest rates?
It can, so a lot of the dollars, so we can invest some of this, we don't invest the fund balance portion of this. That's something we're reviewing right now. You want to leave enough liquid cash in this account, just in case you need it for some reason. But general fund dollars and these dollars are kind of like a high-yield savings account to Bank of America. So right now, we're around three, three and a half percent interest on those. The capital projects money, the hundred and seventy million dollars, that is invested in kind of a tiered bond structure now. So we ladder the bond dollar investments, or the bond investments, I should say. So that way we have some that are maturing in three months, some are maturing in six months, some in a year, some in two years. And that is all generated based on cash flow statements provided to us. So we found that the savings interest rates at Bank of America and the general savings were starting to dip a little bit. And now is an opportunity to push those dollars into actual certificates of deposit or real treasuries, things like that, to where now the rates are at four, four and a half percent. And then those interest dollars then go back to the best, because we can tell you that it just helped favor that industry progress. So sinking funds are the original budget, there on the left, we have an ending fund balance of just over a million dollars. We're looking at about a million six, that was intentional, we wanted to start to build up this reserve, if you will, because we want to start looking at, what do we have to spend, what are the general fund that we can shift into this? Now that we are fortunate to have a bond fund that can absorb a lot of what would ordinarily went into this sinking fund. All the flooring, the paving, things like that around the district. Traditionally, come out of this fund, can now come out of the bond funds. So then we just move the costs from the general fund over. So you'll see, there's a very intentional build-up of that fund balance there on the right. Obviously, that's going to come down significantly, we're starting to look at different projects around the district. We traditionally spend about a million and a half, close to two million dollars on a general fund, on things that, half of which we probably could move over. So that's what we're going through now, being very strategic and making sure that we have the projects that are eligible for the sinking fund. With the goal of pulling that pressure off of the general fund. Now, the maintenance fund, this one was established about ten years ago, as I recall. So again, this fund is, the fund specifically that we look at putting the fertile waste money into, to house the new area. So as part of that process, we would then be strategic in how we utilize that to cover various projects around the district. You know, depending on how we want to spend those dollars. But for now, we felt like this would be an appropriate spot to house that money, to keep it out of the general fund and then kind of gear it up for special projects of sorts around the district.
When are you scheduled to get that money?
Early tides, maybe December.
Somewhere around twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, so how can we sign in the budget for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six?
I didn't put it in there only because it wasn't a sure thing just yet. So once I get actual notification, then we will amend it at that time. So I could certainly put it in there, I mean, we can always amend it later on, but that's why it was not shown there just then.
The difference between the original and amended for twenty-four, twenty-five, is that just-
Interest, or is that? And then food service budget, so we kind of went over this earlier. So again, this year, we'll end just over four million dollars in total fund balance. And really, a lot of that is going to build up of Detroit high kitchen dollars that are being spent this summer. So that's been down early, it hit our books next fiscal year. So that's where you're seeing that reduction, plus of projected increase in total fund balance there. So again, we'll continue to get those excess fund balance reports from the state of Michigan. And then from there, we're required to submit to a plan, submit it to them, they have to approve it, and then we can start having that. But the largest one, one point three million of that is going to be Detroit high kitchen surgery upgrade, so we plan to see that. And then we do have some, just some modest increases in the food service worker wages that we're planning. That's an area that we are quite well accounting with respect to what we pay them. So that's something that the AL and the board have worked hard on in assessing, what is the appropriate rate to elevate them to, but also making sure that we're not in a poor selling position where we're losing money every year. And this is also based on a continuation of the three mills, which was unfortunately halved in the course of this one. TCC, so our Detroit Career Center Fund, so this fund is essentially all federal grants and some state grants. So revenue is always attached expenditures, so this is our Michigan Works programming, and then our adult debt as well. So those dollars flow in through the state and through the ISD or the county, and then matching expenditures. So again, this program also gets audited every year, or every third year, just depends on the total dollars of expenditures. But they were on the last year, so I don't think it'll be up this year for it. But again, they provide the budgets to us, and we're more just going to do a year to eight and a half for them. That's something that we, for only fifteen years, we're not in part with Michigan Works and Open County on this program. So again, there's not a whole lot on our end, other than really the ability to consider it. And then community service, so this is our care and the community recreation programming. So you can see here that they're running a pretty efficient program there, so again, a slight use of fund balance there. I don't want to say use of word, use of fund balance, not that, because it's intentional. We want to bring those savings down a little bit, but what this entails is not increasing costs or prices for the community. So how can you maintain a level of programming without increasing the cost of the community as much as possible? And due to, by setting the fund balance a little bit each year. So cost of all, all this for staff, that's part of their bargaining contracts, their salary schedules. But we also recognize that we want to make sure we're not pushing out too much cost to the community. So again, slight use of fund balance there, but again, so you've got a couple two million dollars. And then the preschool funds for this one, so about two million of that total, four point nine million dollar revenue. About two million of that relates to the tuition-based program. And then just under three million of it is actually GSRP-funded through the state of Michigan. So that's kind of the split we're seeing right now in terms of total funding. But again, there's a slight difference there with the change in fund balance. GSRP revenue equals expenditures always. On the tuition side of things, that's where you can generate a little bit of a profit towards that fund balance. So but again, it's kind of on a very new program, where we're not pushing costs onto the community to the extent that we can. So likewise, they're also part of, are sitting on just over two million dollars of total fund balance.
Dan, do you think it's about the same ratio of two to three, as in, three students from GSRP, uh, three million from GSRP and two million from tuition pay for the kids?
We've been adding a class or two each year, I don't know if we're adding even more next year, or is that to get more slots?
Hopefully some.
I know, it's a matter of finding space in other buildings right now, it's a larger issue. But if you can add more slots, then obviously that's going to bump up the, yeah, we're not adding a ton of tuition.
Yeah, we're shifting the tuition.
Yeah, they're merging that.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so you're basically converting tuition paying community members to GSRP, where that state is covering the same exact preschool sector.
Does the state pay about the same as the tuition?
What do you mean as pay?
As in, like, per student, what the state pays as GSRP is equivalent to what a parent pays?
I'd say it's pretty close. Yeah, I would say we get between twelve and sixteen thousand a student for GSRP. So when we look at a tuition rate, it's comparable, it's just the burden shifted from the parents to the state of Michigan. So it's a difference that's a threshold so much. But it's the same for everyone, because that's traditionally how it is held. There's a question up here, so these are student activities and school activity clubs. So these are internal accounts, so we treat them more like savings accounts. So if a particular club raises money, we hold on to it as a district, and they get an account as they then either put money they raised into, or they can hold on to the money paid for a particular expense. So again, this one is really just updated each year based on the actual amounts that come in and out. We put a flat three million temporarily, we're trying to find a good report that will give us the actual amount. So we'll update that specific number based on what the actuals are. And then we can increase it a little bit, just to give us a lot of the technicalist differences there, so. That's all I got, any questions from here?
So you just want to overlook us the process, so we're going to have our community hearing on the seventeenth, and then we will print out the amended budget for this year as well as the-
The proposed.
The proposed. And any idea of when we're making, like, your little budgets on that?
We're hearing September, maybe?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the challenge, you're facing your staffing decisions throughout the year based on the number that you have to assume the lowest to be responsible for. That presents a very big challenge for us, but, you know, we've got three proposals, which is nice. That gives us some critical basis, I mean, I've been in- I mean, I'm in a situation where you don't even have that by name. But I think there's a regulation that needs something, because we have to pass it by law before July first, so, you know, we'll see if it ends up, we'll remember the basement of what actually happened, but.
Other questions?
Just a little other question, and it's, except we may ask all the information prior to reading.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Dan. So now we have a ton of that to bridge, as you asked, charts we were asking. So this is the information that was provided to the board. The questions that we asked.
Correct. And I shared this, I shared this with me all in my email to you. There were several questions. One was the rubric itself. Could we, could we see that rubric in more detail in terms of how the various curriculum that were looked at were more scored? And so you can see, we use the, our strategic plans of building capacity, deepening learning, early childhood career, and equity and wellbeing, where the, where the filters, if you will, the five curriculum are from left to right, same on each one. And then the zero through three were, they were scored zero through three, and they were scored zero through three based on these criteria. So this is the same information that was shared, this information was shared at our workshop in May, but this specific information was not shared. So this is what we wanted to make sure that you had available to you, so you could see how the teams had scored the rubric, or had scored those curriculum.
Can we know from left to right, what the?
Yes. There, left is, the left is the means of study.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Being brighter, benchmark education, step up to writing and writing by design.
So that's how it was scored by the leadership team? Again, that's the rubric that we used. There was also a question of, was there additional, was there information? So this information shows that the, this is the M-step scores, grades, three, five, obviously you can see that, but this decouples the writing from the reading. So this is writing only. This is the information we shared, aggregate information. And the question was, what about reading? Specifically, so this then separates that out.
This combines all the grid weights.
Yes.
Is this information that is accessible to the, to the district? Or is it generally available?
It's generally available, if you know where to look. But we have, we can get in some regular at districts.
How would it compare to the Rite districts and maybe State and our ISD?
Exactly. Like, we get the information as well if you feel it's necessary. Good choice. I have a little proficiency in writing over time. It has gone down, and it should be, should be announced, it's gone down a couple of points since each, each year since spring of twenty-two. We do believe, and I think the team did a nice job explaining that some of the areas that we believe need the most attention were spelling, the grammar, the conventions. And that's, that was clear from a survey from parents as well as from staff, and from the data itself. It showed that. So that's why there was feeling that the, those updated reading units were, excuse me, were, that it was completely appropriate to adopt those.
Putting that for your tech, are you ready for a full change?
Correct. That's correct. And then last, there was a question of, could we wait? And so I shared with the board, this is completely transparent, I shared with the board, what I've laid out as what I believe, so there were two questions. Should we wait for writing, should we wait for the reading curriculum? Should we wait for reading before we make a decision on writing? And so I kept, and could we wait? I put this chart together, and I think it dovetails nicely with the conversation that we had earlier with Dr. St. Martin. This is what I, this, this matches what we have planned all along, based upon our curriculum adoption cycle. So we do know that January twenty-sixth, the NBA is going to come up with their recommended list, the Tier One Reading Curriculum list, along with the assessments. The intention would be to spend January through May of twenty-sixth, having our URC leadership team take all of that information, put a plan together, a detailed plan for materials adoption, that we would during the adoption cycle, bring that to the board, lay that plan out for the board, while the main time plan of twenty-sixth for approval. And then we would spend school year twenty-sixth, twenty-seven in that materials adoption process. There would be a very clearly laid out plan for what are the, what are the curriculum that we're looking at, what are, what are, where are opportunities for parents to see that curriculum, and so forth. That'd be a very transparent process. Could he intend to bring that back to the board May of twenty-seven with a recommendation? Then the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year would be implementation. One thing I think is also clear that Dr. St. Martin said is that, and we saw this even with the last reading adoption, it takes, in some cases, more than a year to fully implement a full reading curriculum, even one that has been updated. And because it takes time to work with staff, professional development, necessary, new staff are included in that and so forth. So it could take one, up to two years for, for a complete adoption. And during that time, we would not be looking at writing. We would be looking solely at reading. So my point, my recommendation was, we should move forward adopting the updated writing units that would provide us the opportunity to do the work with students during the period of time that we are also looking at a reading adoption. So we don't lose anything in terms of our instruction with, with our students relative to writing while we are intent of doing this, this reading adoption.
Looking at this, I would assume even if we were, we will adopt some type of new or updated reading curriculum for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, is that, that's better.
New and or updated, correct.
Yeah, so during that year, we would not be piloting additional writing curriculum.
Correct.
So there would not even be a chance of adopting, or adopting or implementing a new writing curriculum in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. The earliest we would even do that, and that would be the twenty-nine, thirty school year.
Yeah, that's what that's.
Twenty-nine, we would be piloting if anything new.
Yeah, that's what that asterisk really designed to say, that would be, as early as we would even be considering looking at anything new relative to writing, right? Because our, our focus is going to be on reading here in that period, and writing itself, yeah. So what I believe that adopting the, the, the updated writing units that have been proposed makes most sense for us to provide ongoing instruction, make sure that we're filling with the apps that have been identified, and spelling, and grammar, and conventions and so forth, while we're doing our due diligence relative to reading.
So here's a question that I, that I had. You know, we spend a lot of time looking at this and asking lots of questions. The, we currently use the, the curriculum that's, that's being proposed for writing is one that we currently use, and I think has been in use at least since my non-high degree, it was a kindergarten, or something like that, for the last ten years. So this is not like a wholly new entire curriculum. So in my understanding is so, this curriculum is one that, that has been in use for the last, at least ten years. And what would be updated and in addition to, and some of the things that were piloted, would be addition of spelling and the addition of reading. There's no questions. I want to ask something budget-wise. Adopting this new writing curriculum, I think I remember it's at one point eight billion or something?
Oh, really? So sorry, I was off my. So that's, that's, yeah. Other three thousand basically would be for the next four years.
Four.
Four at least, four years.
At least.
Okay, and does that hundred million dollars include any kind of professional development in some dollars for the adoption of the new back?
There is professional development available. I think what I shared with the board was, given this is, this is not new curriculum, this is, this is just an enhancement, a new version, an enhancement, I would expect the professional writing to be submitted, the professional dollars to be submitted.
So, but again, as I mentioned earlier, we will be bugging on this that are asked we, is there any additional information, I mean, we asked for comparison on the M-step just with Rite districts? Are there data that is required with people to, to make a decision? Okay, we have one question before we're going to open for public comment. Please, Paula, I was going to ask you to make some remarks. I know we have a lot of people in this audience who are interested in theater, so we want to ensure that everybody is operating from the same basis of information, and then we will open for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Will Hart. I prepared a few slides in response to some questions that were asked by the board for additional information regarding the Athens Theater Program. And I'm hoping that these few slides could provide some basic information as to how we arrived where we are currently. One of the questions that's been asked is about enrollment in the courses, the theater courses at both Athens and Troy High over the last five years. You can see, starting at the far right-hand side, and then moving left, what that enrollment looks like. So it begins in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, where we have some students who are still virtual, who are coming out of, emerging of COVID, and then back into our total NC program. Every year, we tally our student requests, so we have a student-driven schedule of the high school. All of our courses are based on student enrollment every year. It allows us to create a new schedule every year based on our student needs. And you can see that from twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, we had a hundred and twenty-six students who put in student requests for theater classes, to this year, sixty-seven total seats. And that's sixty-seven students from Troy High and Athens. So it's important to note that the decline in our enrollment in theater course, the theater class itself, isn't unique to Athens, it's also at Troy High School. One of the things that we've spent a bit of time talking about and looking at is, as our classes have been, our curriculum has been reviewed in ninth grade and tenth grade, we're moving into eleventh and twelfth grade where our electives lie. And it is our intent to be able to look at our theater course in alignment with our English standards, to be able to provide theater as one of our English electives, which will allow students to be able to embed in more intentionally into their course selections while satisfying a graduation requirement. So that's something that we hope for. So when we look at that student request, the student, the number of student requests results in our smaller of intersections. So we need fewer sections to be able to teach fewer students. We often, across the district, use experienced and expert staff in a variety of roles shared between, between buildings. So it's, that is not unique in what is happening for us next year with Mr. Vickers. So Mr. Vickers is an experienced theater teacher. He has expertise in theater. And sharing him would be similar to what we currently do right now with our choir's. So we have a shared choir teacher between Troy High and Athens. We have shared art teachers across the district, we have shared language teachers. We actually share teachers in second year in every single subject area, and in one way or another, across our middle or our high schools. Because that is how we staff, when we look at our staff across. We would never post for a new art position if we had a teacher who could teach art and have room in their schedule who we already employed in the district. So it's just our practice for staffing, and we follow that same practice for staffing in theater. Again, that last one there is to just claim that it is our goal and our intention in working with Mr. Vickers to be able to grow that enrollment in theater and grow back more sustained programs in our buildings. So we prefer not to have to share staff when possible. We love having our staff in our buildings full-time, our principals would tell you that right away, and I know our students would too. Having access to your teacher throughout your school day is the ideal situation. So each fall, we internally post for our Schedule C positions. This is an example of some of our Schedule C positions. So play director is what is listed as our theater, as our theater director position for Schedule C. Our Schedule C positions are posted each year and posted only internally first. So they are open only to our staff members in the district first to be able to fill. And then we post those Schedule C for, if they are unfilled outside of the district, and that's the process we go through. Typically, and as I know you've experienced, and many in the audience have experienced, our band director is our band teacher, right? So Mr. Nutting is our band teacher, and Mr. Cable is our band, is our, is our band direct, our band teacher and our band director. And the same for orchestra. And you can kind of go down that list and see where the extension of our classroom hits Schedule C. And that is often what very much happens in our Schedule C positions. And that is how we've come to anticipating that Mr. Vickers will be that theater director at Athens next year, because this is in interest of his to move forward as the classroom teacher. That would be a natural extension of his classroom. So I, this slide is just to emphasize that we recognize, the school district recognizes that we have a robust and dynamic student participation in the Athens Theater Company. We also have a robust participation in our Troy Theater Ensemble. There's no intent in this work to merge or combine theater programs at Athens and Troy High. So similar to our programs in choir, similar to our programs in any other content area, we are not interested in merging. We have an individual who works at our district, Mr. Vickers, who is very capable of managing those two spaces and plans to do so. The Athens Theater Company will continue to exist in its own entity, but are not, again, not merging with another entity. What's in the box below is the proposal of what our current, our current programming, which I listed here as previous programming, and future programming is, as we design it for this coming year. So previous to now, so this year and before, Athens students have access to one play and one musical. Those are both housed in the last year, were housed at Athens High School. Troy High School students had access to one play and one musical. In our future programming, we are proposing that Athens students have access to one play in November is the plan for this year, and one musical in April, which is a combined musical this year hosted at Troy High. Troy High students have access to one play in January of this year, and one musical in April, which is a combined, also again, hosted at Troy High. One of the drivers of why it's being hosted at Troy High this year is for there to be a live music ensemble. So currently, Athens does not have their pit set up. That is something that we hope to be able to change for Athens, to be able to engage in the participation of student musicians in that production as well. And then finally, these are just two little snippets that came directly from Mr. Vickers, so some reflections from him. I think for you as a board and for this community to know that these are, are his words that he stated here about his commitment to nurturing and growing the Athens Theater Company. I think that it's important to just recognize that this is a passion, that he is very much committed to being able to embrace that unique spirit of Athens and the traditions of Athens once he has an opportunity to get started. That second paragraph that's there really just asks, our students are interested to be a part of joining the official Schoology group, so that is where Mr. Vickers organizes everything. He doesn't use social media or student personal emails or phone numbers. He has a formalized Schoology platform which students and parents can see, and all of the audition information and the draft rehearsal schedules are already up for this first play that will be coming up. So the first play. So again, the interest in me being here is just to be able to provide some information on how we arrived where we are now, and some background information that we are. on how we arrived where we are now, some background information that we are.
If you go back to this slide, there were some questions that, the fact that it's a combined musical, opportunity for some students would be minimized because there would be lesser spots, can you address that?
Sure, so one of the, one of the, this was a question during our parent, our parent presentation as well. The selection of Les Mis is to be able to focus on a larger cast and provide as many opportunities for students as possible in that musical. And one of the other conversations that we had during that, during that parent meeting was, this structure that's proposed here is not a commitment to it always being a combined musical. You know, Mr. Vickers talked about perhaps in the future, it's a musical at each school and a combined play. He talked about getting to know the students to be able to build to their strengths and select different shows based on the strengths of the students who are there. Mr. Vickers also talked about wanting to be able to select Les Mis to put on so that more students had them, so there were enough parts for all of our students to be a part of that. And one of the other things that we did talk about was removing barriers wherever possible. So as we go into this endeavor, we talked about, you know, providing transportation for our students from one place to another if that's what's needed, and then identifying those barriers along the way. It's also not the intent that Troy High would always be hosting the combined show. So that would be.
You mentioned earlier in the presentation that you want to sort of re-grow the program because all programs have robust interests. Is there like a metric you're using for that, like number of kids in theater class or how many sections, like can you talk to that a little?
Sure, so I think, Mrs. DeGuado, just to kind of decouple, so, and I think this has been hard too in our communication from the district. So we talk about enrollment and regrowing, we're specifically talking about our classes, right? So we're not talking about regrowing this theater company because that is robust and active, right? So we recognize that that's there. Our hope is always that our theater courses will influence and grow into that theater company, but our anticipation in growing our enrollment is, we would be measuring it through this, so through student requests and sections of theater. And again, because right now, because this is an elective, that doesn't count as part of your English graduation requirements, we know that with this experience today, our members are subject to elective elections. So we're hopeful by being able to integrate that into that option, which eventually will create a better system.
I feel like a lot of the committees talked about in their communications to us about regrowing being two directors, two programs, is that something that's like off the table forever? If not, is there like a regrowth plan for that?
Yeah, so what we would hope to do is to be able to see a theater teacher, so to build the capacity past what one person can handle when we look at our theater courses. And when we split our theater courses and we have theater teachers at each of our schools, again, that Schedule C position is posted annually, and that is a typical extension of the classroom. So that would be a natural component for us when we're looking at being able to reintroduce someone, to be able to share the load of that theater. But right now, 67 students isn't a load that can't be carried by one of our teachers.
As we look at, you know, how we staff classes like this, you know, and I know we have a lot of students here tonight, I think you would be, maybe even can explain, you know, what is the purview of the board, what is the purview of the administration in terms of making some of those decisions?
Sure, and I appreciate that question. So in our, in our staffing work as a, as a school district, our work around staffing and making those staffing decisions is an administrative decision. So we typically, and one of the reasons I walked through this so in detail with you as a board, is we typically don't stand here and talk about student enrollment in classes, how many classes that we offer, who's teaching those classes. Those are all, those are all explicitly administrative decisions, and those are decisions that are made with our building principals, in partnership with myself, and in looking at what staff we have and how we decide who staffs, based on teacher experience, based on certification, and based on student requests, so that we can build up the appropriate number of sections to meet our student classes.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. So we have, actually, there's 20 more. So we have a lot of public communication tonight. I'm going to ask if any of what we talked about tonight answers any of your concerns, and you want to not speak, that's totally fine. For those of you that are speaking, you need to keep your remarks because with this amount of communication, public duty will be here at least for an hour. So I'm going to ask you to keep your remarks under two minutes, and if other people have kind of made your point, again, you can make a decision of whether, you know, you want to speak. Again, I want to thank you for your patience, but given the amount of public communication we have, and the work of the board has to go on, this, tonight, the items that we discussed are very critical because we're going to be voting on budget, on curriculum. As Ms. Leach alluded to with Mrs. DeGuado, because a lot of these are about theater, the board does not make decisions on how theater is. So we welcome your input, but that really is an administrative decision. So again, I'm just going to take these in the order, we have two questions. Okay, so Ms. A. will kind of tell who going to turn this up, and I'm just going to do these in the order that I have. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Sally Smith. If you could also just state whether you have a child in the district or whether you are a student. If you could state whether you have a child in the district.
I'm a student. I've been a Troy resident for 34 years. I do have two children, they graduated some time ago. When I found out about the anticipated merging of the two theater programs, I was very upset, and I felt the need to come and speak. The theater program at Athens actually changed my son's life and the trajectory of his life when he ended up studying musical theater in New York, and a lot of that was because of the legacy of the ATC. I understand that there are some things that are to be kept separate, but I don't want to forget the kids that will be left out. My son was a kid, that's a little kid, he was bullied, he was excluded, and got into Athens, found out he loved it, he wanted to be on stage. He was a five-foot kid, he was in the chorus of Oklahoma, then Manal Mancha. He grew, he then was a principal player in Les Mis, and then he was gone, literally, in God's belt. I don't want you to forget those kids. We're not out here to have the next Tony Award winner, if we do, great, if we don't, that's okay too. It gave my son, gave him confidence, camaraderie. The kids that were bullying him are now scamming up, applauding him. I don't want us to lose those kids by having programs that are combined. We may have the best talent in that show, but we're going to be losing so many kids, and it will gain so much. And I think Krista Manfredi has built a legacy, she may be retired, her legacy for 15 years should live on, and I hope that we will continue to have two theater programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, please reserve your comments, and we have the next speaker, Ms. Olivia Lee, please come up to speak. Thank you, students. No clapping, please.
Members of the board and all other entities of this workshop, my name is Olivia Lee, and I'm a student and actor at Athens High School. To say I am disappointed with the handling of Krista Manfredi's replacement is an understatement. Mr. Manfredi, along with the Athens Theater Company, have made such a positive impact on who I was as a student actor and person. Prior to joining theater, I had very few friends, and very low self-esteem. I never showed my full personality for fear of judgment. In joining theater, I gained a family as well as a mentor. I knew I, within the first rehearsal, I knew I wanted to come back. I knew this was how I would spend all of my hours after school. I made so many friends and built so many relationships, although the district, although the district promises that the legacy and tradition will not be dissolved, that's just not true. The only way to ensure that is to have our own director that knows the company. Many amazing people already know how to get our attention, camaraderie before shows, ensure body during rehearsals, and know all the inner workings of the theater, or at least are willing to learn. When asked in a student meeting why he'll be doing Les Mis in the spring at Troy High, Mark Vickers told us it's because he's not comfortable with the ins and outs of the Athens stage, which is why it makes perfect sense for us to gain someone who is more than comfortable. Any person of real interest would be more than willing to step out of their comfort zone to ensure a smooth transition process upon roughly 50 kids. Many people who were not given any chance to apply for Manfredi's position know better than anyone just how much the Athens Theater Company, like seniors to the people involved, would be able to be director and/or adult advocate for us as actors. On May 26th, we began petitioning for our company to have our own director. Our goal is to get 150 signatures. As of 6:00 PM today, we have 575 signatures and still climbing on change.org and on paper petitions combined. We received over three times as many as we planned, and over 300 in less than a day. The company alone is not the only group that cares about this. The student body cares, the community cares. If the problem is lack of funds, we'll host fundraisers. If it's lack of interest, we'll work through it. This group, along with the other actors and crew members who have worked so hard to make this company a family, are willing to go to great lengths to keep this family, and I hope you see this in our desire to get our director of our own. It should be noted that we're not asking for the world, we just want a seat at the table, preferably more than a high chair.
I'm going to ask you to please be professional, particularly our students. Okay, I know that we want to give everybody an opportunity to speak, and by, you know, clapping and carrying on, we're limiting people's time to be able to speak. I'm going to actually call like two people in a row so that, you know, whoever is up next, when one speaker is finished, they can start making their way so. Our next speaker is Mrs. Carrie Dunbeck, followed by Mr. Steve Dunbeck.
I'm here to advocate for keeping Athens Theater Program with their own two shows next year and having their own director to lead this program. In correspondence that was sent from the Troy School District to the community, something that was mentioned was the shift in interest. As a parent for ATC, there's no evidence of this for the after-school programming of ATC. The student interest is strong, the shows that have ran the past four years have amazing student participation, on stage and backstage. In addition, as parents, asking questions on the team call, you have stated that all are, the opportunities would still be different for the Athens kids, this is not the case. The combined musical that runs at Troy High is not the same opportunity as running a musical for only Athens students in their home theater. ATC is rich in history, including running a fall musical, a spring play. If Troy School District is really interested in expanding upon opportunities for collaboration, that could mean adding a combined musical, not taking away their individual musicals and putting it in place there. Please consider hiring Athens High School their own theater director to run two distinct shows at Athens High School. The interest is definitely there, the support is there. There's no new models, but this new idea is going to work by combining them. If you had to compare it, and why he, like you said, comparing that our band teacher does the marching band after school, but that's two band directors at two high schools for two marching bands, none of that is combined. Theater's its own unique opportunity, so these comparisons don't even do it justice, but I just put it out there for food for thought. Just as Mr. Vickers said, his comfort's at Troy High. Athens students find comfort daily, not only in Athens Theater, the large facility, the beautiful facility, but also backstage, in the fire room, downstairs in their dressing room, and in the theater hallways. If your words are true or said I'm growing this program, then combining Athens and Troy High School for a spring musical is not the avenue to pursue. Thank you for considering that. Thank you.
After Mr. Dunbeck is Mrs. Janice Ray.
My presence today is no slant on Mr. Vickers, he is highly qualified. I'm a parent of a 24, soon to be 26 grad. They began involvement with ATC in the second grade, starting at Castello and Infinity Mountain Larson, having a community program, such as ATC draws in and gets the whole community together. A reduction from four shows across the district to three shows across the district, any way you add that up, it's a reduction, it's not, you're not gaining anything. Civilization, when it's thriving, it has the attitude to fund the arts and to nurture the arts. Any reduction in our participation of the arts is an admission of our failure to make these kids thrive. We have to give them the opportunity to, what does it say in the blue, the blue bill or this, is empower students to connect with their world, their community world and their interests. Thank you very much.
After Mrs. Janice Ray is Mrs. Michelle Allison.
Hi, my name is Janice Ray, and I'm a current ninth grader at Athens. When Ms. DeGuado, for two years, had the April Athens BTO meeting, she described one of the ways that we were trying to help with the gap in budget was by not replacing teachers for their retirement. This approach may work for classroom settings, as she also mentioned that enrollment is down, so if you retire, it's going to open an opportunity to add students to existing classes. However, I don't think that this same method works around after-school theater, or when merging them with another school is not the answer. First, I want to say that I'm deeply saddened that these changes are being driven by cost savings, and doesn't appear to be in the best interest of the ATC students. Secondly, the communication regarding this change is very poor. ATC students and parents were the last to know, some finding out from Troy High students after it was announced at a Troy High awards banquet. When we finally received a communication with the district, it was very vague and left the door open to a lot of interpretation and false information being spread. The communication specifically said Athens and Troy will move to a collaborative theater model. My assumption, and I'm guessing others, was that the programs were combined. We then received another district communication stating concern about recent public statements and had caused confusion and frustration among families. It goes on to state that ATC is not being dissolved and that the program will remain based at Athens, and productions will be held at Athens. This completely contradicts the first communication. Then there was a parent meeting held to discuss the changes, and it was said that the musical will be combined between the two schools, but the play would be separate. So first, the programs are being combined, then they're being kept separate, and now it's a combination of both. I wonder why there's so much confusion and misinformation. Additionally, this seems to have been wrong without a plan, and the parent meeting was brought up by multiple parents, the issue of transportation, the heading of musical at Troy High. It was said that they are looking at the possibility of buses, but nothing's been finalized nor to go guarantee that that's going to happen. There were other issues brought up around being able to facilitate sports and other clubs while doing the musical, which is doable when all were held at their home school. Now that ATC, ATC students will have to report to another school, this option may not be available, which takes away opportunities for the ATC students.
Thank you. Michelle Allison, and followed by Mrs. Michelle Sayers.
Should I use the word? Okay, good evening, my name is Michelle Allison, I'm a parent of a child with dyslexia in Troy School District as well as a former educator. I'm here tonight to express a concern and highlight an opportunity. While our educators are doing their best with resources available, there is a critical need for expanded training and support to meet the diverse needs of all students, especially those with learning disabilities like dyslexia. Despite the mission and dyslexia handbook being available for several years, its full recommendations have not yet been put into practice. To support my child, I had to seek structured systematic literacy instruction with the code emphasis approach outside of the school day. Our district must take further steps to ensure these needs-based practices are available to all students within the school system. Right now, there is a powerful opportunity through Section 35M, which provides 87 million funding, that can also be used for professional development, high-quality instructional methods, and stronger intervention systems. These resources are meant to help districts meet rising expectations and improve student outcomes for students like my daughter, particularly in literacy and support for students with dyslexia. Now is the time to take advantage of this funding for professional development. To date, the district has not communicated a clear plan to implement additional professional development, or letter string. I strongly urge the Troy School District leaders to pursue this funding proactively. Another concern is the lack of meaningful parental involvement in the recent instructional decisions surrounding the writing curriculum. During the curriculum adoption process, parents were invited to only attend one informational meeting at the end, and they were sent a short survey. Input was requested at the very end, parents were an afterthought. Families should be valued as partners from the beginning, not consulted at the end. I ask that you wait to adopt a core curriculum, and that you fully engage parents at every step of the curriculum adoption process. Reading and writing are skills that are intertwined, and our students and families are better. Thank you.
Followed by Mr. Chris Taylor.
Hi, good evening, Michelle Taylor. My son, Brian, is a freshman at Athens High School. He's here tonight. He has a biology exam tomorrow. He's been here tonight, and this is important, and that is why I'm here. He is a member of the Athens Theater Company. I listened in on the informational hearing held by Ms. DeGuado. Uh, the informational meeting, as you can see unfortunately, it has left us more concerned and raised more questions than it answered. I want to first state that this is not about Mr. Vickers. I've heard amazing things from Troy High's parents about it's about us having our own theater work. This is about opportunity, especially for Athens High School students. Ms. DeGuado's comments that Troy High and Athens currently share all their culture is not the reassurance that she believes it to be. Her, all her comments have told me is that Troy schools are cutting and continually decut their heart's programs. I am concerned about classroom opportunities, especially at Troy Athens. I am also concerned about the transportation after school for students participating in the musical in the spring. It's said, and who's paying for it? We just sat through your budget meeting. Who's paying for this bus that potentially will go from Athens to Troy High? Has anyone discussed the logistics at all? They haven't. They just made a plan and set the figures out there. So thank you, and we will be happy to meet. Thank you.
Mr. Chris Taylor, followed by Mrs. Emily Burn.
Good evening, Chris Taylor, president of the city of Troy, and I was told I would have two minutes.
I have one minute as it comes to an end. Does it have a two-minute button? Sorry.
President of the city of Troy and father-to-be freshman at Troy Athens. I would also like to thank the board using your own work, the amount of students we have here. Uh, most of them have their first funding tomorrow morning, um, in about less than eight hours. Uh, just to echo my wife's point, there is no plan for transportation. I think that's been very apparent this evening. Um, more so, when you look at trying to grow the class size and the class interest with the theater department, I don't understand how that is going to be capable when you are now limiting the amount of classes that you would be offering. And following along with the slide that she showed where you have the decrease in the participation in the class, has anybody talked to the students that did it in the twenty-three, twenty-four year and were no longer able to do it in the twenty-fourth year or five year? Was that because of scheduling? Was that because of more A P. classes? Has there been any considerations maybe we need to offer at different times during the day? Not adjust less, um, less opportunities? Another point that was made by the assistant superintendent was touting the qualifications of Mr. Vickers and the ability that he handled teaching it, teaching at both schools and running the theater department of both schools. While that is great, I'll echo my wife's point. This is not about Mr. Vickers. What is plan B. if he leaves? There does not seem to be any sort of follow-up plan if he leaves. Are you going to hire one theater director? Or are we now back to trying to hire two? And if this is a cost-saving measure, then please say so. But also remember that the next time you come to us, ask me to bring the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Emily Burn, and I'm a Troy resident, parent, and a teacher. I am here in support of adapting the writing units of study. The writing curriculum committee used their expertise to dissect each potential curriculum in order to see who would meet our high one Troy standards. They overwhelmingly decided that the writing units of study is what is best for our district. I trust their opinions in this matter because they are the specialists in the field of education. I also trust my own experience. Over the past two years, my first-rate daughter has blossomed into a wonderful writer. In fact, it's her favorite subject. She comes home with her writing samples, and I laugh out loud at them. She details real-life events with thoughtful reflection and insight. Not to mention, the parent survey came down with ninety percent of the hundreds of participants agreeing that their child's writing improved to some degree. So there you have it. This seems like a no-brainer. But if I haven't convinced you, please at least do your research and your homework. Are these studies on the topic funded by a reputable and by a source? Are the opinions you are hearing about from T S D. families? After all, if you look hard enough on the internet, you will find someone who agrees with your opinion. So please, don't get confused by circulating posts or flyers being passed out at children's sporting events or spam messages that come to your personal phone on Sunday at night. Tactics like these are designed to distract you from the objective, well-researched conclusions of those actually educating our district. I hope this board is, uh, is capable of making an impartial decision. As elected officials such as yourselves must account for the needs of the district, not unethical personal benefits. Please live up to your statement goal number two. Partner with the members of the T S D. community and support public education. I ask, when this topic is up for vote, will you be a partner? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Joe Ferlato, followed by Mr. Joseph Haas.
My name is Joe Ferlato, and I'm a parent of a kindergarten in Troy Schools. I moved to Troy because of this district's reputation for excellence. If I had known by now, but I don't know about the district's approach to literacy, I may not have made that statement soon. Unfortunately, I'm not alone. I've heard this sentiment because I have many other parents late. Um, as we heard today, as part of Public Act One Forty-Six, approval list will be released in January, and the Michigan Department of Education released the list of thirty-five M. Recommended Literacy Curriculum and early intervention programs yesterday. Not surprisingly, um, Troy's current curriculum is not on that list. And that list sets the table for what will be on the list in January. Presumably something that will be similar is what we heard today. Um, potentially changes, but definitely similar. The writing curriculum currently being piloted doesn't align with any of those state recommendations for thirty-five M. either. In my opinion, this district seems to have become the smartest person in the road right now. The board often says we trust the recommendations of our experts, of our experts. Forgive me if I don't share that trust, especially when so many other experts disagree. Experts around the country, experts in Michigan, including the Michigan Department of Education, and experts in other leading districts that are reaching very different conclusions. Dr. Nucheski, you've said that this writing curriculum is not neither or, but a yes and. Um, that it can supplement one of the recommended core programs. And quite honestly, that sounds nice, but there are other options that are far better for the state's recommended programs. It's highly questionable whether this pilot writing curriculum is a supplemental fit at all. Regardless, most of your questions to Dr. St. Martin today indicated that you'd like, that many of you would like to follow the minimum requirements by the law. Let me offer you a golf analogy. People ruin their scores with what's called an anyway shot. That's when you walk up to the ball with the wrong club, realize it's not the right choice, but for whatever reason you hit the shot anywhere. It's a small decision that wrecks a room. Don't let this writing curriculum be your anyway shot. You know it's not the right fit. Don't push forward out of convenience or pride. Choose the right club and take another shot.
Thank you. After Mr. Joseph Haas is... Luke, I'm sorry, I can't agree with the person above.
My name is Joe Haas, Athens High School, class of nineteen ninety-one. I no longer live within the school district boundary, but grew up here for nine years of public education, including all four years of high school. For two of those years, I participated in the Athens Theater Company without taking theater courses. For fifty years, the A T C. hasn't just taught a group of students how to perform a performance at a minute past eight. It's helped them become better people. It's taught them intangibles like teamwork, self-confidence, and loyalty. And once you join, it doesn't just become a part of you, you become a part of it. The suggestion to rotate future musical productions is penny-wise and pound-foolish for every current and former Athens student and their parents and guardians whose blood, sweat, and tears made this program into a model that will be emulated by every high school that strives for excellence. Setting aside the logistical challenges for students, while one year may allow a larger class to accrue, future plays effectively risk taking away chances for them to participate in an extracurricular activity that delivers pound-for-pound, value-for-the-dollar, one of the best opportunities for self-improvement beyond the classroom. I understand that decreased enrollments and reduced budgets require tough decisions, but to take a belay to a program that devolves dozens of students from all grade levels and all lots of life and is folly for a district that prides itself on not just excellence, but well-roundedness. I was lucky enough to have the Athens Theater Company touch me as a student thirty decades ago. Please keep the light going. Thank you.
Next, Luke is Ms. Irina Koka.
My name is Alistair Luke. I am a twenty-twenty Athens graduate, proud member of the Athens Theater Company community, and was a former choir kid. So Athens Theater Company and Christopher and Freddie were of the first people in areas where I felt like I had a voice, especially at a time where I felt completely voiceless and completely vulnerable to everything. I was bullied. I was, I guess I was bullied immensely. You cannot get rid of this community. There's... cut.
Ms. Irina Koka, followed by, um, Ms. Harishwaram Singh.
Hi, thanks. Um, the lack of transparency of this situation is concerning for many reasons and brings to question the amount of power that is on unchacked at an administration level. Merging the extracurricular Athens Theater Program with Troy High's would disproportionately harm students at Athens and would take away opportunities from kids that need it the most. These kids being those who aren't the most competitive and aren't just looking for something to do after school. I would know, I was one of those kids. Even now, as a neuroscientist, my theater experience is the reason I succeed in communicating my science to the public and to other theaters today. Making this program more competitive will essentially cut the program in half and become exclusive to those with the most time, the most money, and the most resources. This directly refutes the T S D. mission statement of providing each student the best opportunity to learn. If the combined show was really meant to provide more opportunities, it would be added in the summer. Athens would still get their own musical in their home theater. And while some administration may claim this move is out of financial necessity, the teacher who directs the extracurricular theater earns roughly three point five, three thousand five hundred dollars per show. This is chunk change compared to the rest of the budget you heard tonight. So I fail to understand how this could be a financial issue. I am a taxpayer in Troy. We voted for you. I voted for several of you. You have been entrusted with the voice of the community, and that trust includes the responsibility to act as a check on administrative overreach. Yet here we are, watching the irreplaceable educator be quietly pushed aside and a thriving program crushed. So I urge you to stand up for our students, our educators, and our values. Give Athens their own theater program. Investigate the superintendent and administration's handling of this entire situation and ensure that our district's future is not built on the dismissal of its past.
Good deal. That's Ms. Singh. Excuse me. Um, is Mr. Lynn Fryson?
Good evening. My name is Christopher Morris, incoming graduate of the Troy School District and now a student at the University of Michigan. I'm also the daughter of an educator and administrator, and I plan career... sorry, excuse me. I plan on pursuing a career in education policy. I'm here because I care deeply about what kind of education we give to our youngest learners, and I speak today in strong support of the units of study curriculum. For the past thirteen years, I've seen what good writing instruction can build. Confidence, critical thinking, empathy, and power. Power to tell your story, power to understand the world, power to change. I want to begin with what matters most. I am who I am today because my teachers didn't just tell me how to write and sound out words. They taught me how to think. They taught me how to write with purpose, revise with clarity, and communicate with confidence. It has enabled me to be successful in everything I pursue, whether that be drafting and proposing real policy to Detroit Public Schools or presenting before state legislators. That is what units of study does. It treats students as instruments of change, not just test takers. The loudest critiques from, come from advocates of a misunderstanding of science reading, centered almost entirely on phonics instruction, on the belief that if we just drill decoding skills enough, comprehension will follow. That is not how learning works. Comprehension is not the product of decoding. It's a product of thinking, of vocabulary knowledge, of engagement, of background knowledge. Decoding without purpose doesn't create lifelong readers or confident writers. Most of these critiques come from individuals who have no training in up-to-date curriculum design, literary instruction, or pedagogy. And while every parent is entitled to care, caring is not the same as knowing, and educators are the ones who truly know. Troy students are thriving. We're one of the most top-performing Michigan districts. Our students excel because our teachers use rigorous, thoughtful, research-based curriculum, like units of study. The research shows it works, and students show it works.
Okay, Mr. Fryson, followed by Ms. Maria Charbagi.
Uh, hello. I have, um, this is supposed to be for three minutes, so I'm just going to send my turn. So, I'm ready. Okay. Um, I know you guys don't have, don't have any jurisdiction over how A T C. is promised. I'm not trying to convince you to do this maybe better, but you have the administration over who's hired for the returns of writing. And I would like to say that if Mr. Vickers is chosen to be the new A T C. director, that I'm scared that our culture as A T C. could get, um, um, could get left behind because of... A big part of the culture is tech dinners, which are used, building opportunities for team bonding and inside jokes, and he does not plan on doing it that way. So I, I, my, my, my scare of is that if we don't have the trust to give those people who are capable of parting behind the A T C., it will be a secondary T T E. Or, um, Troy ensemble. And that's not anybody's fault, but I believe that if Mr. Vickers is chosen to be the new Athens director, our culture as A T C. and our energy and our hustle and our friendship, but it will be left behind, and it's truly sad because it's still a part of my life. And I think it's important to be able to... Because the teachers are not from me being sad, it's from me being furious. So don't worry about that. And since I have time, I can only say that the Troy Athens, um, classes are different than the Trenton Theater Company because I don't, I don't, I'm primarily responsible. I do like serenades and anything, and I'm still here. So looking at the involvement in Trenton's classes is, should not be a deciding factor for the involvement in the A T C. classes because it's very important to every candidate of those classes. So please take that into account when looking at the involvement that is not only A T C.
Um, Ms. Maria Charbagi, followed by Ms. Vanessa Malushy.
Hello, my name is Maria Charbagi, and I'm currently a sophomore in Athens High School and a part of the Athens Theater Company. Before I start, I'd like to clarify the misinformation I've heard being spread. We do not hate Mr. Vickers, nor the, nor the Troy Theater Ensemble, and we should respect them. The second piece of information that I've heard is that regarding our current director, Christine Ferri, of course, news of her replacement is very upsetting, but we need to change it. Our goal is not to get her rehired, as we understand that cannot and is not going to happen. However, we would like our own insulted director. Elaborating on this, I would like to talk about the unfairness of advantages given to Mr. Vickers throughout the hiring process. Upon doing our own research on the collective bargaining agreement toward the C B A produced by the Troy Education Association, as well as the Troy School District, we have found some inconsistencies. At the virtual parent meeting last Thursday, Assistant Superintendent Christine DeGuado rejected that because he is going to be next theater teacher, Mr. Vickers is giving the first right of refusal. Ms. DeGuado also states at the parent meeting that the job is never posted and privately avoided to Mr. Vickers, which contradicted what she said today. It also states in Article thirty-seven point one, all new or recently vacated Schedule C. clubs shall be posted. Looking later on in the document, we can see play director is listed under Schedule C. Nowhere in the contract does it claim that, that the in-school subject teacher refuses first right of refusal. I would also like to note that the decision of merging the classes supposedly in production long before we or our current director were aware of them, and even when they came out, we were the last to know. We believe as students of the Athens Theater Company that hiring Mr. Vickers is unethical, and the board of education should, should considering, should, should considering hires someone else to be sole director of the Athens Theater Company, and that the job should have been publicly posted, as stated in the C B A. Um, one last thing I would like to make is...
Hello, my name is Vanessa Malushy. From the beginning, we haven't had good communication with information being relayed to us in what we feel is a very vague and last-minute manner. We want to have a strong community with the ability to properly communicate and work as a team because that's vital to success. What's made this a very frustrating experience for parents and students of the A T C. was the unclear and quick change we weren't prepared for. was the unclear and quick change we weren't prepared to hear and didn't have voices. That's why we want to make our voice heard now, and we aren't sure it will ever be. Along... Many emails have been sent by parents and students alike, and no responses. This further adds people to the fire? Because... Because we never got a follow-up in the form of a personal message or when we did get a message sent out to the community as a whole, we only scratched the surface. We were never given the opportunity to ask for mail grab. Clear communication ensures that messages land exactly where they're intended and understood accurately. But feeling we weren't given that in our only follow-up email explaining the future plans, we now ask what is the next step, not just for the ATC, but for how we are going to communicate to avoid this problem and frustration in the future. We want closure, and we know that it isn't too late to make a change. Will you please take what we've said into consideration and see how the community feels about this change? For the future, because change can always be good, but you need to understand where we're coming from asking for a separate directive. Because slapping our label on every show we do and saying, "Oh, well, you've had your own company", just won't be a satisfactory solution for us. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Mills Sherman, followed by Ms. Hannah Rebo.
Good evening. My name is Willa Sherman, and I'm here to speak on behalf of students who believe in the voice of the community at ATC at Athens. I'm a freshman at Athens High School, and although I have not been here for very long time, I feel like working with the ATC has really connected me to other people who they may feel like I was really at home. My passion for theater begins during middle school, but I never had the opportunity to join since all my classes were full. I saw Shrek in the fall, and I immediately thought I want to be there in the fall. So I decided to do the spring play in God's Favorite. Once I joined ATC, I had so many friends that I really cared about and loved. I personally think that student matinees is what really brings students to joy and to see how shows are put on, so they can also want to go there and be onstage. With matinees gone and being formed at Troy High, lots of students have opportunities to perform in front of the peers of fellow students at Athens. This seems relevant, but not only to the ATC, but to the students at Athens on the floor seeing the matinees every single year. Mr. Vickers told us in a student meeting that Athens will not be giving matinees a musical. And Athens students mentioned, "I don't go to the place. I don't find it interesting when I like the musical to watch." We're supposedly combining due to low interest in the whole of increasing competition markers. However, Athens will have no opportunity to enjoy the show that brings a lot of students. We want to grow our company by taking away one show... by taking away the one show that students can share, but we're not effective achieving that goal.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah Rebo. Sorry, we couldn't hear you. Can you repeat that? I'm sorry. There was some cheering going on. Followed with Ms. Bella Ray is next.
I joined Athens Theater Company because my friend had the idea too after seeing Shrek and because of the things I've heard from people who watched the student matinee and never came to play. It's also worth mentioning my own personal passion for theater. I can say from experience, anyone who has joined Athens Theater Company is going to understand. In Shrek, more than fifty people were involved in the play. In God's Favorite, there was over forty. I'd like to add before continuing, the class is different from ATC, and the involvement numbers are separate. And considering the fact we're talking about the company, I feel it's important I added that. The only reason there was a smaller cast in our recent play was due to a mix of the spring play always being smaller and our intended cast being busy at the end of the year. It's also important to note that they had less roles in Shrek as well. And all the individuals in our most recent play were planning on coming back in the fall. Involvement has not been an issue within the company. We are not... We have not been seeing a huge decline or a shift, as Ms. Montante explained in the email, when it comes to ATC. And saying that there has been is just wrong, especially because of the impact it's had on so many and because of how many people have shown interest in this company. I've personally had people approach me asking questions about how to join. There doesn't seem to be a good reason to combine the companies, considering the kinds of inconveniences and lost opportunities that many of my community members have expressed. We've recently been informed that a couple ATC past members have been emailed by TTE discussing their placement in the cast of the spring musical. Auditions have not yet happened. It is not fair to the rest of our past members who haven't been showing to me properly, like, to tell someone that they have a role. It's especially upsetting considering how Mr. Vickers ensured us fair auditioning system. That promise was broken.
Thank you, Ms. Bella Ray, followed by Mr. William McFarland.
Hello, members of the board and those of you taking time out of your day to hear our voices. As we said a few weeks ago, I had incredible relationships with a handful of Troy Theater Ensemble members. However, due to this recent seat situation, those relationships have nearly disintegrated. In an informational email sent out to one Troy, Ms. Montante Nogen, we are excited about the opportunities for students across Troy to come together for larger district-wide events, something many students have expressed interest in. Upon speaking with multiple TTE members, one explained to me that a number of them believe we are stuck up and that we don't care that Vickers saved our theater department. It was also mentioned that the original emotion toward us was annoyance because of Athens. And how that annoyance grew once the petition and plans to talk to the school board came up. On the other side of that, Athens actors have expressed some concerns about this collaboration being placed in spring. One noted, "I always had trouble with people talking about me behind my back. Especially with all this drama going on, I know that's going to happen again, and I don't know if I can handle this, as theater was this sort of safe place for me." Another said, "I'm scared that we will be the Athens kids." The members of Troy Theater Ensemble have been complaining about ATC's reaction to the situation, saying we aren't giving them a chance and are just rude and angry, while meeting us with hostility and anger. Based on this, why should we have any reason to believe their feelings will change? These are the real voices of the students. The district plans have expressed interest in the collaboration. We are being spoken for, and it's not fair. Has anyone expressed this interest directly? How many emails have been received from parents and students alike regarding this interest? How many emails regarding disinterest or dissatisfaction? We were never asked how we felt. All this for student interest, while some actors are looking at other shows to take part in at outside companies.
Mr. William McFarland, followed by Mrs. Clarice Harwood.
Hello. My name is William McFarland, and I am a member of both the Athens Theater Company and Bestincher 3729. And on behalf of both organizations, I'd like to speak upon an issue that we find most concerning, that being transportation. When it was announced that the Athens Theater Company and Troy Theater Ensemble would merge next spring to do like this, it was announced that there would be bus fares. The transport members would be at TTE from Athens to Troy High. However, there are approximately a large number of members of the ATC who drive. And because of this, they must drive from Athens to Troy High. And it takes around 12 minutes, and it uses approximately 0.18 gallons of gas to go from Athens to Troy High. Multiplied this by the amount of rehearsals and tech week, you'd get quite a costly schedule for the students who drive. And there has been no announcement of any gas money or gas change, and when it was, there was no confirmation of it. So my concern is that there has been no accommodations from the Troy School District to help the students of Athens who have to drive from Athens to Troy High for rehearsal. Listen, if this thing were to go along, I would prefer that we were treated equally. Look at the pillars. The pillar is to attend to the social, emotional, and physical well-being of all. Are we really attending to that if we don't provide equal support for both parties? Troy High country and Athens are part of the youth league. They can more than afford to do this. I feel like what we need, if we were to go ahead and do a plan show next spring, is proper support for all. Because accommodation is important. I think we can all agree to that, and if TSD could do this instead of leaving us in the dark when it comes to transportation, that would be most helpful. That is all I'm asking for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Clarice Harwood, followed by Ms. Sanelis Mill.
Hi, I'm Clarice Harwood, parent of a second grader. I'm also an educator for over twenty years. As of yesterday, MDE released its Section 35M Literacy Funding List tied to $87 million available to help schools support reading success using proven methods. I have always taught in districts that have an ELA horn writing couple, TSDs seeking to enhance a separate writing curricula. $180,000 to be exact, just to add grammar and writing to what they're already using. Teachers can do that on their own. They don't need to read a script to do that. During the last workshop meeting, one of the board members asked why the teachers want to continue using units of study. The answer was "choice", and that word came up four times. Most of these students are six to 10 years old at best. The only choice they should have at this age is the choice in the kind of text structure they are going to apply in their writing, or the choice in the genre of book to read to build background knowledge, as Dr. Martin mentioned, and supplement the topic they have been reading about in that module. Choice in voice and style of writing, choice with which mentor texts they want to emulate. What they need from the age of six to 10 is guidance, structure, and a framework for their writing coming from the reading. Educators study, have advanced degrees, and continue their education to keep up with the evolving industry, just as I hope and expect my doctors to do. Education is no different. Now, back to the 35M grant. The deadline to apply is fast approaching. Our neighboring districts such as Birmingham and Rochester are already piloting the course on the list that came out. If TSD does not take advantage of this 35M grant, our TSD teachers will be at an disadvantage. Also, the next time the district asks voters to pass a bond, this will be remembered. We know bonds don't pay for curriculums, but this grant can free up money.
Thank you. Ms. Mills, followed by Mrs. Erica Rodger.
Good evening. I just wanted to begin with recognizing how dedicated these students are. I had the opportunity to go to the Larson Band performance, the award-winning Larson Band performance, and take three sixth graders out to ice cream while they sat patiently waiting for their opportunity to speak. I'm a member of this community. I have three students in Troy schools. I'm also an educator in a district that has a robust theater program. And my husband and I are both active members of the professional theater community in the metro Detroit area, and I've worked as a creative artist for the Detroit Creativity Project. Combining the two programs will limit the students at Athens. When you combine a show, there will be less opportunities for students to earn parts. There will be fewer opportunities for crew members. It is a limit for our students, and we need to recognize that. Combining students for one show sounds like a great idea, but when you're subtracting the second show that should be there writing, it is going to be a hardship for them. Students have to earn their way up to being upperclassmen to get a chance to be a bigger part. We're combining two very large schools into one show, and that really limits opportunities for them and limits their community. Look at how dedicated they are, that they worked together, they created meetings together, they conferenced together, they handled this like very, very mature adults. Whereas I think I was a bit more spicy when I heard what was going on for my son, and he handled it really, really well. He's a ninth grader. It's a viable community there. And you really, really should limit their opportunities. And we see this combination, and they more importantly see this combination as a situation that will limit them. Thank you.
Ms. Erica Rodger, followed by Mr. Alex Carbo.
Hello. Thanks so much for letting us on. My name is Erica Broderhorst. I'm an alumni of Athens, the class of 87. And I was heavily involved in the theater company all four years. Most of the other speakers have kind of made points that I was planning to make, but I feel as someone that does not have a child in the school district and is this far out from my time there, it's still very important to me. And I think that everyone should know that, and it should... it should continue. I think Troy has always been a very heavily sports-oriented. That was not me. I tried. I tried soccer. I tried volleyball. I tried cheerleading. I didn't make it on anything, and then I found drama, and that was my hit. And so I really think it's important to give all the children as many opportunities as we can. Alimis is a great show. It's a huge cast, but I know from my own personal experience that that's not the case in many, many places. And I still do work in the theater. I work downtown at the Detroit Opera as the Wigan Make a Crew Leader. And even in the professional world, you know, roles are very limited. I just think it's very short-sighted. I think hopefully things can be resolved somehow. I know that they would never consider merging the soccer teams. So I think it's unfair to consider that these kids should deserve that sort of treatment. I think that's kind of... Yeah, I've got a lot more to say, but you know, but in any event, thank you for the opportunity. And thank you for sitting along.
After Alex is Dr. Jen Anderson.
Good evening. First, I'd like to commend the ATC students and parents who are sitting for two and a half hours listening to presentations, providing support to have their voice heard. Please remember during the next school board election, and after you sat here for two and a half hours to have your voice heard, and after your colleagues, you were seen as an annoyance and shush. This is how certain board members perceive you. You gave them your time, but they can't give you your time and space to express yourself as in a community, and they just want to get through this and get home. Since I only have two minutes, I skip to an email reply from Dr. Macheski part of the May 6th workshop meeting we shared. We are deeply committed to best practices in curriculum design selection and implementation. We agree wholeheartedly that decisions around curriculum will go beyond popularity and proximity. They will be grounded in evidence and aligned with strategic goals with a clear code, some proven outcomes for all students. That said, the true impact of any curriculum lies not in just its selection, but its implementation. But during the May 6th workshop meeting, very few of the curriculum selection components that Dr. Macheski referenced can be found in the presentation specifically. One, there was a single slide in the end of the presentation, Slide 28, that outlined curriculum implementation. Curriculum implementation is a central component of curriculum success, as Dr. Macheski suggested. It is surprising that curriculum implementation does not feature work on and in detail in the presentation. Two, unfortunately, there was no information presented for how the proposed curriculum will improve outcomes for all students. More specifically, how this curriculum will eliminate COVID learning costs. In 2014, 2015, their grade ELA proficiency stood at 84.6%. As of 2023, 2024, this has dropped to 63.2%, a 21% drop. This is an all-time low for Troy School District. I keep hearing about experts. So why did a community member need to point out there was a writing curriculum M-Step that was available after the May 6th workshop meeting, which was subsequently shared by Dr. Macheski tonight? And yet, the writing of curriculum gaps that were shared by Dr. Macheski this evening showed a declining trend, even post-COVID. '24 was worse than '23, and '22 was even worse than that. You know, this is something I'm promising? And while COVID was obviously the precipitating factor for Athens even, we need to move on and get a plan.
Dr. Jen Anderson, followed by...
Hi, Lori. Thanks for listening. I'm really proud of our students. They're so proud. And I think that's a testament to our writing units of study that we have. And I want to speak about two other students too, like our former Hamilton Hawk, Amina Ahmad. And her writing was actually, her elementary writing was actually inspired changes in her district, such as creating a culturally responsive parent calendar. And it's been shared with staff and students across Troy and shared with Islamic Association of Greater Detroit. And I also wanted to speak about her brother, the late Bilal Ahmad. And they both learned that their voices mattered. And just last year, when they were only 12 and 13 years old, and students at Bullen Park Middle School, they were inspired to share their writing at a Troy City Council meeting, where they needed almost three hours, as we did today, to speak up against current injustices in the world. They spoke up for people that cannot... They spoke for a cease-fireing Nazism, for peace, for love. And their speeches are inspiring. Their writing beautiful, so much kindness and purpose. And their parents have said time and time again that along with the family and faith, Troy teachers help them become who they are. Our students don't learn this by filling out worksheets or working in spelling word books. They know their voices matter by writing volumes to authentic audiences, honing their craft with feedback. Amina and Bilal understood the power of the written word. They spoke to city council and chaired a relief, and now we have a timeless video, a legacy of Bilal's heart, one that we could cherish forever. Amina told me that she will keep writing to keep healing. What role models for us all. We're so proud of our students, like Amina and Bilal, and all of our students. And we want our children to keep writing, keep creating, and keep inviting us into their lives. Students, you matter, and your voices matter. So please vote yes on the doctoring line. It's a study.
Mr. Nicholas Vergoli. Okay. And then Ms. Michaela Spetchy, excuse me, speechy?
I'd like to say hello to all of you. I was a class 2019 graduate. Dr. Melton, I have you as principal. What I would like to say is what you guys don't... What I would like to say is what you guys don't see here are TTE members. All you see is ATC members, sitting here fighting for their right, for their musical. Now, why is that? Was it that TTE was promised an advantage over ATC? As clearly pointed out, Athens did have a combined choir teacher for both schools. We lost out on opportunities as in Athens Choir with a new director taken over. Would you guys like to afford the ATC the same opportunity and give them their own teacher? Because as many people have previously stated, you're losing out on a lot of opportunities in the band, the orchestra, and other things that go over just the actors for each show. Please take into consideration those students as well, because we do want to do it.
Thank you. All of that, communication.
Apology, I didn't get a chance to put my name down. May I speak as well?
Sure.
Thank you. Please identify yourself in the comments.
Thank you for your consideration. My name is Emily Collet Amoroso. I am a two thousand five graduate at Athens High School. As a student, Kristen Manfredi and the ATC provided me with an opportunity to develop public speaking skills and confidence and others, as I just displayed. And those skills have served me in my career. I'm now the executive director of a national nonprofit, and I credit much of my success to skills that I developed on stage in my high school years. Importantly, I recall as a student, I and my peers' ability to participate in after-school activities was at times limited by our ability to access reliable transportation. Cars, car insurance, and gas money are not universally available to high school students or their parents, especially in the Athens district as compared to the Troy district. It's reasonable to conclude that transportation complications created by taking this newly blended Troy school district musical infrastructure off-site will limit participation by Athens students whose families are less economically advantaged. Transportation resulting in participation issues aside, combining the THS and AHS theater programs, even if just for the musical, will necessarily decrease the real-world opportunities Troy students from both schools will have to access robust roles that will allow them to develop critical communication and social engagement skills. This is a problem, especially in a real-world working landscape, where employers, myself included, are increasingly noticing and reporting that young people entering the workforce across the board have decreased competence and ability to communicate effectively in person and over the phone. Robust theater programs where these skills can be developed are a solution to this part, to this problem. In conclusion, fewer students able to travel to participate and fewer roles to fill is just so counterintuitive. Troy students deserve for these programs to be bolstered and invested in rather than streamlined and cut. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate the respectfulness that you struggle to show towards the board. Again, it isn't that we're trying to stifle enthusiasm, but this is a meeting where we need to get all the people to have their opportunity to speak. So with that, I'm going to move on to any other stuff I can. I would say thank you to all of you who are spoken to. I appreciate hearing all of your feedback. Also, I want to make a quick update. I know we made a lot of terms. We talked a little bit about, since we talked about budget today, about a board treasurer and finance angle, and one of our assignments was to start to reach out to other boards. So I've been at the Oakland Schools Board workshop sessions. I've been talking to other board members about, do you have a treasurer? Would they do? And most do have a treasurer, like was reported to us. An interesting development that I heard about that I wanted to share and kind of put on a later docket to talk about is the idea of a finance committee, including board members and administration. That's something that almost all the other districts that I talked to said, like, oh, you don't have a treasurer, they sign checks. But most important piece is they still have a finance committee that has regular detailed updates on financial things. So I'm going to make sure we talk about that in budget season, something we can talk about in the future. Okay? Can you do that?
Thank you. I'll be brief, because we've been here for so long. But thank you to everyone who's just sat through this very long workshop. Over the weekend, I attended my first graduation ceremonies for Troy High, Athens, and IA. And it was very moving to see and hear all the success that our kids are, everything that they're accomplishing in our school district. It was very inspiring. I also would have had a senior graduating this year, so it was especially touching to be able to hand diplomas to friends, friends of mine. They're, they're kids. So that was a wonderful thing. We have one more graduation to go to on Wednesday for TCCHS. Not just as exciting as you mean. And I think what we have to look forward to for, um, everything that we heard about, to all the, uh, hold on, sorry, my brain is starting to turn off. I do want you all to know that we do hear your concerns. We do. We're not just kind of letting it fly over our head. We do take it all to heart, okay? We all sit on this board concerned for this community as well, and we just, I just want to make sure that you know that we hear you. So I took all of your words to heart, and I just thank you for sitting through this long meeting and waiting patiently to have your voice be heard. So, thank you.
Just thank you as well to all our community members that came out for a variety of reasons. Your impact is always welcome. And I just, real briefly, and this is down the road, as we, you know, I know we're, and we continue a process of working at the MTS. And I know we can see at one point we had said, um, we kind of follow up with the, with the state complaint. There were some actions that needed to be taken around that. Some times have passed, and I'm pretty ready to, yes, you can replace it until fall. So just making sure that we get that on someplace between that and fall.
Not much. I just wanted to again thank all the speakers today. I know we had a lot of this to go over. That was especially important as well. But your, your concerns are, it's just as important. So I'm glad that you were able to stick around, and I apologize that you have finals tomorrow, that you have to see up. But good luck on that, and good luck on your last week of school. But thank you very much for showing up. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and speaking. I think more, but it's late. I will be attending the Government Relations Committee meeting tomorrow at Oakland Philo High School Board Association, so I'll report on that. I don't have anything additional to add, but I do also want to thank each and every one of you who stayed so late and spoke to us and maybe, we hear you. Doesn't mean we always agree with everything you're saying, but we definitely hear you, and we take that into heart and look in, look for solutions that will help the situation along with solving the problem. So we'll do our best.
Dr. Macheski.
Nothing other than that's been added for to TCCHS graduation tomorrow, as well as Project Search on Thursday. And we'll be right back in this room at eight o'clock on Thursday, if you want to see a real exceptional ceremony. This place will be full, and there'll be a lot of, a lot of students. Very excited and a lot of tears, so look forward to being there. Our partners from Corlo as well to that graduation. And I can thank our students for sticking it out tonight, and their parents as well.
Okay, with that done, again, I will also add my thanks. Again, our task was not to have to have you sit through two and a half hours. We did not do that purposefully. The business that the board needed to get done tonight is critical for decision-making in our G meeting. So that's the reason why, you know, we're focusing on that. With that, we're going to adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting will take place here in two weeks on June seventeen, seven o'clock, and that will be, we'll be scheduled for.